I call to order a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin School District from Monday, October 8, 2012, at 6:33 PM. The Board may be in closed session to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties dismissed of a public officer or employee, including superintendent's evaluation, duration of purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, deliberation of the negotiated contract for prospective gift to the district, deliberation about commercial or financial information the Board has received from business prospect, or deliberation of an offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect, entered to consult with legal counsel concerning pending or contemplated litigation, or settlement of an offer, or on a matter which the school district's legal counsel determines should be confidential, in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.077, and 551.071, respectively. Okay, welcome everybody. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Snyder, all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Passionately ask me, thank you, Board. Pledge of allegiance.
It's been pledged. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So, the Board is going to go up. We've got an executive session scheduled for about 30 minutes, could be more or less than that, and we will return shortly, and reconvene. So, we will see you all in a few minutes. Thank you. 20, thank you for being here. Welcome, CBAC tri-chairs, and all of the guests and members of the committee and community members. Let's get started. We've got three, I think, maybe four, pretty substantial items tonight, so we'll start with the progress report from the CBAC. Dr. Starfins?
Yes, Mr. President and trustees, this evening you are scheduled to discuss the CBAC progress report. This is a continuation of the Board's discussion from the August 13 work session when the CBAC gave its first report. Tonight, you'll hear an update on their efforts to develop a preliminary scope of work for the next bond. The administration is seeking any Board input, feedback, and direction on the superintendent's CBAC. Tonight, the tri-chairs are here with us. Albert Hawkins, hello, welcome again.
Good evening.
Ramon DeJesus.
Good evening.
And Carolyn Merritt, thank you for coming. And then, you know, and right after this agenda item, we have three AFRs that are actually another, a couple of key additional components to the work of the CBAC, which we could also discuss while they're here, and allow for them to shed some light on how that experience has been going as well. They're pretty big-ticket items.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Good evening, and on behalf of the tri-chairs, we want to express our appreciation to the guidance and direction that the Board has provided, and given us an opportunity to give you an update on our progress so far. I think there is a PowerPoint that's been prepared, and like to kind of walk through that and use it as reference points as we cover some of the areas and matters that the CBAC has discussed to this point. Just looking at Slide 2, the second page, again, it reminds you, it gives you some background on our formation and your guidance and direction to the superintendent and back to the CBAC. Wanted to let you know that since this formation, the CBAC has held 10 meetings to date. That includes a full-day retreat on various issues and matters on the Saturday. And I really want to point out to you that the members of the CBAC have been, in general, have been very diligent and focused on the task at hand, and have participated fully and positively in all the discussions. Moving to Slide 3, again, some more background, but it also includes the goal of minimizing the tax impact by focusing on projects of highest need, and, but still looking at a comprehensive enough scope of program. Just to give you a little bit more insight into some of those matters, our committee has had a couple of discussions around tax levels and the impact to taxpayers in the district. We've interacted with the CFO and the staff a couple of times, and certainly, we have a pretty strong appreciation for how any bond election may have an impact upon taxpayers for AISD. And we are maintaining a focus on that as we continue to work through and discuss the most critical needs that the district has, and how that'll be reflected in any changes in the tax rate that might be necessary to finance those. Looking at Slide 4, this slide just really indicates some of our focus on the AFRs. We have been, as a committee, been kept well-informed on the status and progress of the AFRs as they move through that process. Want to thank Mr. Fryer and the staff for ensuring that we get that information as well. We do have information needs for several of those AFRs before we can determine some of the capital improvement impact that might be included in a recommended scope of work, particularly the AFRs dealing with some of the larger areas, and Mr. DeJesus will discuss that a little bit later. I also wanted to make sure you're aware that our CBAC has been very aggressive in seeking information and analyzing the data, questioning what those needs are, and looking beyond, in many cases, what the departments have indicated their needs are. And so, we are fortunate to have members on the CBAC who have good familiarity with the school district and some of the more particular needs, and we've had several departments come back to present different information to us, to break it out in different ways, and to justify the requests that they brought forward. And so, that's an ongoing process, but we're relying upon the focus of the CBAC as a whole to help vet all of those requests and determine whether they are adequate to meet the needs as our committee identifies those needs. Like now to transition to Carolyn Merritt, I'm sorry, Ramon, who will continue the presentation.
Our committee has reviewed needs assessment, engaged departments and faculty, facility staff in dialoguing questions, and several key points, including the impact of possible reductions amounts of funding requested, identifying items that are essential to the function of the unit, and priorities within the requests. On several occasions, we've had asked for additional information and for a more refined proposal to justify the requests. The committee has received detailed requests from over a dozen district departments and academic program units. We have reviewed school overcrowding conditions, been presented with student population demographic projections, and examined proposals on the construction of new schools and classroom additions. We have also received types of proposed improvements that would improve energy efficiency and environmentally reasonable responsibility with a reasonable return on the investment. To date, the committee has received overviews on needs, including systematic repairs, as I mentioned, new construction in addition to address overcrowding and growth, safety and security, transportation, food services and maintenance, technology, libraries, educator quality, science department. We've also looked at some of the preliminary scenarios for the development of the annual academic and facilities recommendation with potential capital funding needs. Some of these include the Rosedale School and the Clifton Career Development School renovations, the Fine Arts Program and facilities improvement based on the Kennedy Center and Fine Arts Study results, parity and equity in the career and technology education, levels and timing based on scenario developments, and secondary athletic programs and facility improvements based on program assessments request. And we've also looked at items or issues within the school for young men's level and timing dependent on scenario development. I'm going to turn it over to Carolyn, who's going to continue the presentation.
The CBAC has received our requests, and the requests we've received have been vetted by the senior cabinet to assure that each department's requests are in alignment with the AISD 2010 through 2015 strategic plan values and the strategic priorities, key action steps. The cabinet's work was discussed and presented to the CBAC at our September 29 meeting. Slide 9. The current timeline, so attached in your packet is the 2013 bond program timeline if we would have an election in May of 2013. As you can see by the timeline, once we have finished our process, it will move through the superintendent to you, the Board of Trustees. The district must also be mindful of meeting the state and federal statutory election requirements that are indicated in the shaded areas. The CBAC members received a presentation from the chief financial officer, and we had extensive discussion where she provided some essential budget and finance information. It was a very important dialogue for the committee in that we got a greater understanding in how the district's commercial paper program works, and some of the other ramifications and issues with all of the other elections that are occurring. As we continue our discussions of revenue assumptions and tax implications, we will be provided with additional information as it is requested. As expressed earlier, the tax impact and community support will be important consideration as we develop our final recommendations to the superintendent. As my tri-chairs mentioned, we had a full-day meeting on September 29, and we accomplished quite a bit, including discussion of revenue assumptions and tax implications, the identification of projects and AFRs for which additional information is needed. We broke out into individual subgroups to analyze specific proposed projects, and began to come to a consensus on our preliminary priorities within the individual categories. We definitely have a lot more to do. We have not completed the task, but we've made some progress in determining priorities, but we've also gone back to staff and the individual departments with additional requests for information. Ramon?
Moving forward, we will continue our priority-setting process. We will be provided with information on the individual campus plans, which I think is very important to this committee to hear what our campuses have developed and sort of are coming to us with their view of what is needed in this bond proposal. We are also going to develop a preliminary scope of work so that we can provide it to the public for feedback at our public hearings on October 23rd and 25th. Following those hearings, we will schedule an additional meeting to incorporate feedback from the hearings, to make necessary adjustments to the preliminary scope of work before coming to the Board on November the 12th. I want to remind the Board and the public that the public hearings will be October 23rd at Reagan High School and October 25th at Crockett High School. And at this time, my fellow chairs and I would be happy to provide any additional information.
Well, thank you, three. Thanks to all the members of your committee, and probably all the folks who've been giving you input, including our staff, for all the work that they've done to get this far. A lot of progress. It's still a long way to go, obviously, between now and a May election, but thanks for all the work to date. Let's open up for comments or questions. Mr. Torres?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the three tri-chairs and all of the committee members that have been doing, putting in a significant amount of hours and a tremendous amount of work on this. It is not an easy job, and I recognize the amount of effort that's involved and leadership on the part of the three tri-chairs. So, thank you very much for doing that. But it is a very critical and important activity for the district. As you can tell from the presentations that you've had and the work you've put in, the capital needs in a district this size are tremendous, and the cost to make those investments will also be comparably large. I'm very happy to see that, you know, you are going to be spending more time on the individual campus-generated plans, because one of the things that oftentimes has happened in the past is that through very good efforts on the part of staff to sort of look at things at the district level, you tend to become less focused on what the campus sees. You know, there's always two ways to look at things, and oftentimes, when you look at it from the district perspective, you tend to overlook what campuses believe are their priorities and are their needs for success on their campus. So, it's important that you really give that a significant amount of attention, because I think that's where you can also, believe it or not, save some money, because oftentimes, what we think we need to do everywhere, a campus will tell us, well, you really don't need that here. What we need is something else that they can benefit more from. So, that's going to be very important. But I want to talk to you a little bit about the needs and sort of the history of the bonds in the past. As I'm sure Kurt and some of the others will tell you, for a couple of bonds, we focused heavily on HVAC systems, roofs, basically the structure of the buildings, because they were in dire shape, and rightly so at that time. We purchased significantly, we made a significant investment in purchases of buses to make our environment cleaner and to take advantage of some opportunities that we had at the time. But I think we're now at a point where although maintaining and continuing to fund an appropriate amount in those areas is important, I think we're at a point in time in this district where we really need to be looking forward to what we're going to be doing in terms of helping our students to be prepared for the 21st century. But there's a way to do that, and a way to do that so that taxpayers are also aware of the fact that we're looking forward, but also looking at their pocketbooks as well. So, I encourage you to think about how we start to present the needs of the district to the taxpayers in terms of ensuring that everything that we put forward has a dual purpose, that it's both upgrading and refurbishing, but at the same time, supporting the design for a 21st-century classroom, that we reflect a vision and a plan, a strategy for the district in terms of the whole purpose of the bond package, not just replacing or expanding a wing, but what are we doing to improve the quality of that wing and to achieve the accomplishments of having a classroom that is preparing our kids for the theme that we have, which is preparing the whole child, and ensuring that we're looking at those investments that help substantiate that commitment. I also want to continue to encourage you to have consistency and uniformity across the district with that theme. In other words, I think it's important that in this city, we have a tremendous amount of support for the district, but oftentimes, we don't muster that support in a uniform manner. And so, it's important that as we look at the district and we look at the improvements, that we have consistency in the way that we make improvements, that we make upgrades, and that we prepare all of the facilities for enriching the learning experiences of all of our children. So, what are some of the areas that I think we need to be focusing on? Well, I think, you know, we have spent significant efforts in science labs, and we need to continue to make sure those are good. But as we look at the whole child, I do think other areas in the district, like our athletic facilities at each campus level and our district-wide facilities, really need to be made an important priority. But the reason why those types of facilities are important, you know, we need to continue to keep kids engaged in school, and just as our fine arts programs do that in one way, our extracurricular activities and athletic programs do that in a different way. They help keep that child fit, healthy, and ready to learn. They help develop that child for future personal conditioning. You know, I think those of us that have been in the military, at least pseudo-military, myself I'm talking about, know that personal conditioning is something that you need to take seriously, and we need to instill that in our students. And we need to do that through the athletic programs that we have, and the types of activities that they will continue to use as they go on in life. You know, we recognize that one of the problems with obesity that we have in this country is that we have been unhealthy in what we eat. Our children have not been exercising as much as they should, and we've allowed them to get this way on our own watch, so we need to do something to change that. So, I really want us to think about how we look at athletic facilities and look carefully at how we spend that money, but look thoughtfully at where we have severely neglected some opportunities for, opportunities for our children to develop personal conditioning activities. And last, and I'll let my colleagues also contribute, but I also want us to think about, as we look at the whole child and as we look at 21st century, we need to think of a theme that tells our taxpayers, that tells those of us that are going to be coming after us, that we have really been looking to the future. We haven't just been making improvements for now. And that's something that you need to think about. How will you package this? How will you make this so that the actions that you're taking and supporting are actually supporting the words that you're trying to put forth? That's going to be very difficult. It was very easy for us, because you could see science labs. You could see how that was important. You could see where that was going to be done at every school. What you're going to have to do is to develop that theme and develop those priorities that make every taxpayer in every school, through these individual campus-generated plans, know that their schools are going to be enriched by this bond program as you move forward. That's going to be the big challenge for you at this point, because we can certainly spend the money. That's not a problem. It's how you convince our taxpayers that it's being done in a way to advance the district. And then finally, the size of the package. This is not going to be a small package. I encourage you to be leaders and reflect what you really believe that we need to spend, and the trustees here will help support you, but do not be shocked by the amount of money that it will take. Spend your efforts on helping us package it in a very convincing manner. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not sure if you're welcome to respond if you want to, just nod your heads. Okay, there you go. Other comments or questions? Mr. Snyder?
Well, thank you, guys, for the work and the conversations that take place. I've attended a couple of your meetings and know that they're well-attended, and folks are participating and contributing as they should. I have a slightly different take than Mr. Torres on this. I've got multiple questions, so I'll be glad to halt at some point, and you can come back to me if other folks want to add in. One of the concerns I've got about this is that when we first started discussing the bond package, my take on it was that we were going to have a somewhat comprehensive discussion about what we really wanted in the future of our facilities. And I have been a little bit disappointed in the way the information's been presented to you, and that it really seems more like a wish list of needs, either perceived or actual, and less of a discussion about how we want to maintain our facilities over the long run, or what we can actually afford to do. I firmly believe that one of the major problems we've got is too many old facilities that we need to address in some way. What I've seen in the meetings I've attended, and I've heard about from others that are working on the committee, is that staff has presented lists of needs and technology, or some of the other areas that have been presented, and, you know, I fully acknowledge that there are needs. I mean, one of the things that was given to me was that if we needed to have a bond to fix the roofs and the HVACs and, you know, keep the doors open, you know, that's something that needs to get done. But if we're just continuing to perpetuate the old system, I think we need to have a little bit of a conversation about that first. I know that staff is leading some of the discussions. I would hope that they take this into consideration and see what can be done at this point to kind of mold together things so that work is not lost. But I do have real concerns about the direction and the amount of money that's been kicked around as well, too. I realize that we're generating more money simply because we have a larger tax base, more expensive properties, we've got things that are just generating more money, so we don't have to raise the tax rate as much to generate more money, which is good, but at the same time, it's a bottom-line thing for folks that aren't necessarily taking home more money or are going to have to pay those taxes. And I think we need to be as reasonable as possible in what we end up sending out to the public. So, you know, I would look for some kind of direction that says, here's how we're going to address our facility needs, and here's what the bottom line is for the way in which we need to address the issues right now versus a large, comprehensive scope that we try and raise, you know, a whole lot of money to do a whole lot of different things. A question I've got is, last time you were before, so, Mr. DeJesus, Ramon, I've known you for too long, sorry, was not here, but the issue of capacity, which drives a lot of things, new schools, additions, those kinds of things, was not addressed. I have a continuing concern about the way we get capacities reported to this board. We essentially have three numbers, what we told folks the school was built for when we built it, the so-called permanent and the so-called functional capacity. Has there been any discussion or resolution on that particular issue that I'm not aware of?
Mr. Snyder, we are still gathering all that information. It is very complex information, and you have to imagine that for a group of citizens that are coming together for a purpose, it's going to be more complex and more needing to really dive into that sort of explanation than it would be for the Board, who's seen it many times. So, we're still coming back on that. But what I do want to assure you of is that the staff has done a great job of presenting options to us. But this bond committee, and we're talking about many of the members there, have asked for either additional information, have asked for different scenarios, have even asked, and will take athletics, to come now twice, come a third time to present to us, because things are needing to be a little more clarified. So, I can assure you that this bond committee is not just gathering your information and basing whatever scope of work we're going to come to you and come to our public. We're really trying to navigate and ask the questions. And I do want to say something about what Mr. Torres alluded to a little while ago. We are trying to make this a package. We have asked that at the next presentation of athletics, that it be tied to PE and elementary, because that's where your future athletic program students will come from. So, we want to see some tie-in from the elementary PEs to the athletics, and how we're going to build that program in order to get more student participation, especially in some of the schools that struggle to get participation due to either facilities of the schools that struggle to get participation due to either facilities or other reasons.
Okay.
And there have been some discussions, um, and in our Saturday meeting, we did have, um, requests for more clarification and some concerns about, um, for example, the boundary committee is still meeting. And so, we are looking forward to hearing from them as far as, uh, things that might change with the boundaries. But there is, um, some concern, and we will be getting some additional information at a later date about, you know, schools with high-out migration and things like that and how to address that and make sure that it's aligned with our long-term planning.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I'm glad you brought up the boundary committee because that was one of my next questions is how's your interaction going with these other committees? Like, you know, I have not heard directly, at least, a word about how we're proceeding in the boundaries or any of the other committees. And, you know, I would hope that we're looking at relief, in other words, in other ways than just building additions or new schools, that kind of thing.
Well, we do have members on the bond committee that also serve on the boundary committee, that also serve on the AAFR committee. So, we do have a lot of, uh, members that serve on the different committees, and what we're trying to ask of them is to present some of their requests that we're asking for, for some information. The issue that we're seeing is that they're trying to meet in a small amount of time to address these issues, and so, we're waiting for more of, of guidance from them as to how they're looking at things in order to be able to incorporate that. Right now, it's probably still at a developmental stage.
Trustee Snyder, I just want to add that the, uh, BAC Boundary Advisory Committee is scheduled to present at the 16th meeting.
Scheduled to present to the CBAC.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, it's a good stopping place for me. I've got other questions, but...
We'll come back to you. See if you have other questions or comments, folks. Mr. Snyder, Guzman.
Good, uh, good evening. Thank you so much, uh, for the work you do. It's extremely important to us, obviously, and to the community. Although the, uh, the putting together of a package, a bond package, is not obviously a science or a perfect science by any means, uh, there are techniques. I'm mostly interested, or strategies. I'm mostly interested in, uh, how is it that you're looking at, if you're looking at it already, other than need and, and, uh, and some of those factors? The balance of, of, of the package so that it gets support across the board? And, and if you're looking at that, uh, have you had discussions of that or do you intend to? From the standpoint that if you, uh, good, bad, or indifferent, if you, if you cited, if you go too much on one end, even though the need may be there for the, for the most part, it may or may not get support in other areas of, of the community, unfortunately. And so, how is it that you're looking at that particular aspect?
Well, I, I think you've raised a very delicate point, and I think there needs to be, uh, certainly a view that, uh, whatever we develop is balanced and fair, uh, and, and we still have some of that work in front of us to do. I could tell you, right now, the, the, the primary focus, uh, that's been taken are looking at what are the essential needs across the district, regardless of how they might be reflected in different parts of the district. And so, I think there's going to be a, a continuing strong interest in, in addressing some of those infrastructure needs. And, and by chance, I think those infrastructure needs exist almost every place in the district. So, there'll be some balance that's, that's achieved just through that. I think we will look at, you know, the functional equity issues, uh, and make sure that those needs are, are, uh, well-addressed. Uh, and so, there's some balancing of those needs and the priorities, uh, and the, uh, the level of, of dollar impact we could have upon, uh, the taxpayers that have to be taken into account. And so, that's still, that's still a bit in front of us.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Snyder?
Okay. Um, the campus plans, can you tell me, I, I took it from the previous conversation that you had that you haven't actually seen all the campus plans. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's, uh, coming up for one of our, or maybe more than one of our future meetings. It may take more than one meeting.
Okay. And you're soliciting plans from every campus?
Every campus has submitted a plan. We've been, uh, given that information.
Okay.
And we have asked questions on that to make sure that every campus does submit a plan, and we've gotten information that at some campuses, they were slow in developing. They found out they had a new principal. The principal may have been busy opening schools. So, we're making sure that we have that. And purposely, we've sort of waited to a, a timeline where they're able to get more information to us than to rush them and, and get it to us sooner than, than what we would have hoped.
Okay. And how are you addressing the, um, equity and the development of those plans? Like, I imagine some campuses are going to be, um, more practiced, you know, putting together something like that versus some of other campuses?
Or they may have access to other resources that don't exist in some schools. And we've asked the district staff, uh, to make sure that, uh, they provide the necessary technical assistance across all the schools, but particularly those that might have, uh, more limited, uh, resources to develop, to really complete the campus plan and look at the needs of the facility in a more comprehensive way. And so, I know that the district staff has been in contact back with each campus to make sure that they've, they've been able to work their way through, uh, the detailed requirements of submitting the campus plan and, and they provided technical assistance where needed. I think there's still going to be, uh, some differences, uh, in the, um, level, the detail, the quality of plans that have submitted by campus. But I, I think all of them are going to be adequate for us to be able to determine what the needs are.
Okay. And are the individual campuses aware of, you know, what they can submit and cannot ask for in these plans? Like, uh, the example I'll use is I was at a campus, um, a week or so ago, and I asked the principal about their campus plan. Oh, yes, we had it done, and we had a discussion about it, and the campus plan was pretty much focused on, um, facilities for special ed students, and they have a special ed population, so it was legitimate as far as I was concerned. But then I asked the question, this is also a very overcrowded campus that has lots of portables at it. And I said, "Well, did you consider things like a covered walkway for the kids that have to leave the building that didn't go to?" And, "Oh, no, that didn't cross my mind or come up." So, um, how are those kinds of issues being addressed? I mean, we're, you know, the, the real needs of the campus are being brought into play here. Um, you know, I, I don't want to have one campus say, "Well, that took care of our special ed problem," whereas another campus comes up with a, you know, multimillion-dollar plan for implementing their vision, which consists of whatever.
Mm-hmm.
You know, how are you handling that issue?
Well, I, I think, you know, when we look at some of the, uh, the overall requests, it's going to address, uh, much of the needs that might exist at a campus. So, when we look at the systemic repairs, we know that that's going to address some of those infrastructure needs that a campus might otherwise identify, but we really are already have information on it. And so, we've asked, uh, to make sure that that information's not duplicated for us or we're not double-counting numbers. We also know that where there are capacity needs, uh, that that's going to be reflected in the, in the numbers that we're analyzing and looking at. So, we'll be able to independently, uh, or, you know, with supplemental information from the campus, still be able to focus on what those capacity needs. There may be some enhancements, though, that, um, were not included in the campus plan, uh, that, uh, members of our CBAC, uh, may bring forward. We have, we have members of the CBAC who, uh, are, um, involved with campus, um, committees, um, just, just in a range of ways. And so, they may be aware of some of those. If we find that there are, uh, gaps or disparities in the kinds of things reflected in certain districts, we certainly can, uh, go back around to those campuses and ask if they had any other considerations they wanted to put forth. So, we could do that.
All right.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And we have heard of campuses that are requesting things that were already in either the libraries or in systematic repairs. And we're going to address those as we start looking at the campus plan. But my hope is, is that our task is going to be, how are we going to improve the academics for that campus through these campus plans? And, and I hope that that's where we're going to be able to, maybe even in some cases, ask the staff to send that campus plan back to really focus in on that. So, even though there'll be some of those walkway issues and issues because of overcrowding and other scenarios, I think that our real true intent is to look at the academics. We've even asked that when this is presented to us, that an associate superintendent, someone from the academic office accompany that presentation so we can begin the process of understanding how this ties into academics because I think that's how we're going to reach equity, uh, in a way that parents can understand and that we can get the whole, uh, community to embrace.
And in addition to that, um, we do have a very active committee, and we have asked staff for lots of additional information. And I believe that the expectation from the committee is that when we actually, when we receive these ICPs in the next two meetings, that we will be asking for additional information. And we do have a sense across the committee that we are looking for consistency and equity in areas. So, I think if we come up with something like, such as the covered walkways, then we'll go back to the campus and say, "Is this something you need?" And so, we will get more feedback in that way.
Okay. Um, your meetings on the 23rd and the 25th, um, what are we trying to do here? Uh, I mean, I haven't seen a list of bond projects, a couple of scenarios that have floated past the board for various things, but certainly not a comprehensive package as such. Um, so, I mean, what, what kind of input are you looking for from the public?
At the, at those meetings, we plan to, um, present basically the things that we have discussed and that are on the table and hopefully get feedback from the committee, from the public, um, regarding what types of things we may have overlooked. I know in the past, the public forums have, have given us those, have identified different areas that we have needed. So, I think if there are some signature programs that, you know, they'll bring to the table telling us they need additional stuff. So, we are trying to get them to help us vet the things that have already been presented to us by staff as needs of the district and see if the community is in agreement with those.
Okay.
And that's going to take every one of our next meetings until those dates in order to come up with, with that list and how we're going to present this to the public. So, in no means have we got a clear picture as to how we're going to present this to the public. But we do have already some items that have come forward that I think the public is going to be very engaged in, along with the ones that they come to us with. And I think we should have enough to at least get some determination at those meetings as to how to move forward.
Okay. Um, are you satisfied that the public has been corporately engaged and notified about these meetings? I mean, we're two weeks out from the first meeting, basically, and, um, you know, I'm not, I may have missed something, but I'm not aware of anything that's been sent out to the public or the individual campuses notifying folks about the meeting.
That is not something I have any, uh, knowledge or information about, and so, we could certainly, uh, look to have that done because these meetings, um, are the opportunity. I mean, the public has an opportunity, each of our CBACs, to make a presentation consistent with district policy, but that's hardly ever used, as, as you know. And so, this is a real opportunity for them to come, uh, and present those, their, the needs and their perspective, uh, to the CBAC. So, we do need to make sure this is publicized.
Mr. Snyder? Uh, yes, Trustee Snyder, today I, I did, uh, review a draft of an announcement that's going to go into the statesman, so that should be going in this week and get submitted tomorrow.
Okay. Is there anything going out from the individual campuses through newsletters, PTA, anything along those lines to get people engaged?
Mr. Snyder, my hope was that when the associate superintendent or when the academics, uh, directors come to us along with the, uh, next presentation of campus plans, that we would be able to ask them to make sure that the campuses are aware of these public meetings and that the, uh, PTAs are aware of these public meetings because I think that's where you will get your largest audience. Once they're aware that a campus plan has been put out, they're going to want to be there to articulate or to at least hear what, where it stands in the process.
Okay.
And also, uh, Trustee Snyder, uh, you know, we have our touchpoints document, and we have a public relations coordinator specifically supporting this, and so, that will be a part of our strategy going out to make sure that each campus is notified of the public in.
Okay. Well, that all sounds good. I mean, my, my point is that we're two weeks away from the first meeting, and, um, you know, I know how my schedule fills up, and I would imagine that there are more than one or two other folks that have the same kind of demands. So, um, you know, just enough notifications so people can take the time to do so if they want to. Um, and finally, I wanted to get the input of the tri-chairs. Um, there, there seems to be more and more focus on the May of 13 election date. And, I mean, we're basically four months from having to, you know, have the board do something that would cast something in stone and put it on the ballot. Um, do you feel that you've got adequate time and resources to actually, you know, put together everything, vet it, um, come forward with something that's going to make a reasonable plan that you think the voters are going to be able to support in some way? I mean, my, my personal take is it seems a little rushed, but, I mean, I'd rather take the time to do it right than take the time and meet a specific date. So, I wanted to get your feedback as to whether either yours or the committee's perception was that you had adequate time and resources to, to meet a May of 13 date.
Mr. Snyder, on the one hand, we are working hard to get this information so that we can put a bond proposal to the public on the May 13th. On the other hand, to extend it any further would not take into the consideration the conversations that have gone through this district on TREs, on other entities having elections, and because of the window of opportunity really gives us May 13th, even though we may want more time and would like more time, I think we can possibly do it with the support of, of the board. I know the community's ready to begin the process of understanding what's going to be on that bond. Are there needs going to be on that bond? And that's going to be our, our task is to make sure that we get enough needs addressed in this bond that the whole community will come out and support it.
And I agree in that we've been moving forward with the understanding that there was hope that there will be a May of 2013. I think we've received, um, a lot of information, and the individual campus plans are going to be very important, and then we are going to have a lot of work to do between November and January as we get more feedback from the public to determine, did we go in the right direction? Are there things that we're missing to, to kind of make it gel?
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Poye?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I want to thank y'all for all the work you're doing. I know what it's like, and, um, and y'all are gathering a lot of information, spending a lot of time and talking to a lot of people, and I really appreciate all the work you're doing. Um, Mr. Torres, uh, shared with y'all a lot of the concerns I have about athletics, so I'm not going to go back there, uh, much, but, you know, you guys all know, you know, the things I've been saying over, over the last, you know, many months about the athletic facilities, not only our, our joint use, uh, or district-wide use facilities, but our facilities on our campuses. And so, um, when, and I don't know, you know, how, you know, that information is going to be coming to y'all, you know, if they're going to be talking about the ceiling tiles and the gems that are falling out and all these different things and the drainage and the this and the that and all that stuff. Yeah, so I don't know what all's going to be there, but I, I am hoping, um, that y'all at least get a comprehensive enough picture of what the facility needs are on the campuses. And even if we can't address them all in this bond, that we can address some of them to at least, um, make those facilities not only presentable to visitors who come to those campuses, but also put them in the condition that we would, that we would like to have all of our children in. Because right now, many of those facilities, you know, are not that way, and I, I wouldn't be able to say that I would like for my child to be playing ball on, on certain fields, so, on campuses. Then, and so then, when we go to our, to our large facilities, um, they're, you know, we've done a lot of work there over time, um, but they still need, you know, ongoing work. I mean, it's just, there are so many things. So, I'm hoping that, that y'all get a very comprehensive, uh, list of, not just a wish list, because most of these, I can't imagine would be a wish list. I would think these are just, are, is a list that, that could make these, not only these facilities... facilities safe, but also, you know, something that we wouldn't be embarrassed to have people come to. I mean, I, I used to talk about the bathrooms at the, at the stadiums all the time because they're so awful. And I know that the athletic staff, you know, works on them and works on them and tries to keep them clean, but you can bet every time you go to one, somebody's going to say something about how they are because they're just, they're just awful. So, so there's, I won't go any, any further on that. And I know that we've talked about equity, but, you know, there, there's an, the issue of equity of programs across the district. And, and so as you all are looking at things and for future growth or future facilities or whatever, you know, I, and I don't know how equity of programs plays into the work that y'all are doing. Because what I'm calling equity of programs, y'all may be thinking of it in other terms that I don't know. But, and one of, some of that I'm hoping will be, will be helped with the South High School. But, but when we talk about, and I, and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that it's in here somewhere, you know, for funds to actually, for a facility and either a, a, a repurposed facility or, or a new facility, but, you know, I'm, I'm hoping for a repurposed facility or a retrofitted facility. And so, so I'm, I guess I'm looking for y'all to, for a nod at least to say that, that when you're talking about equity of programs, that you're talking about, you're also including what the South High School, you know, could be. I don't know if you're going to be asking questions in your, in your meeting or if that is even going to come up or if we're going to hold those kinds of questions for our other meetings because I haven't got a clue. You know, I know, I see that smile, you know, and I'm probably crossed right into something that I probably should have waited to do later, but program equity.
Ms. Moya?
It's coming, yes.
The committee has discussed the South High School in detail.
Mm-hmm.
Many conversations. We thought it would be fair for the committee that's working, the subgroup that's working on South High Schools, to come back with some sort of proposal or some sort of scenarios or options so we can continue discussion. But I did want to let you know, it has been discussed quite a bit.
Okay. So when we're, when y'all are discussing getting, getting information, is it clear to those who are talking about it with you all and wherever they're, you know, engaging with others, that it is a South High School? That is not dedic, it is not determined to be in one part of South Austin or another? That it's strictly looking at South Austin?
Right now, what is clear is that we need to make a decision on whether we want to build a South High School in order to fit the needs of some sort of academic program, some sort of specialty program that the South does not have.
Okay.
So right now, that's the concentration of this group. The location and those kind of other details might come into the equation later, but at this time, we're really pushing to see what is the need for that South Austin that we could accommodate and get the voters to, to, to vote for.
Okay. So is it also clear in your conversations that no land has been purchased?
That is very clear. We do understand that there is some money already in previous bonds for that land. And so we, we do understand that.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm aware of some communication out in the community that where those kind of statements are being made. And I want to, I want to clear it up that the, that land has not been purchased for a school, high school in South Austin.
And just so you'll know, we've even discussed that if that land is purchased, purchased with the previous bond money, we as a committee would like to look at the contingency funds to go towards building whatever we propose there. Now, that's not official, has not been run by the district, but just to kind of give you the level of detail that we have discussed the South High School because I know there's a lot of interest among the members and among board members.
Well, not only that, but there's a lot of interest among the, among the community. And so the sooner some of those, you know, community meetings and conversations can occur, the, the better. Because the longer we go, the more misinformation's going to be out there in the community with these emails that seem to be flying around all over the place with people saying things that I don't know where they're even getting some of this information from.
And that is where the public hearings are going to come into real positive. We'll be able to at least give some groundwork to the thinking on the South High School and give some history on it. But we'll be able to hear from the public itself, especially at the South part of the public hearing, to hear what the South Austin and even North Austin people may think of a specialty program or what kind of specialty program. I've also been informed that in tomorrow's paper, you know, on October the 15th, there will be a announcement on the public hearings and also robo calls will be made to CACs and PTAs.
Announcing the public hearings.
Announcing the public hearings.
Right.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. Robo calls to CACs and PTAs are great, but some schools have very, very small PTAs or none. And so, and I know we do a lot of robo calls, you know, about a lot of different things on campuses. And I've heard that some parents don't even listen to the calls anymore because they're just kind of tired of it. But I don't know any other way to get, I don't know how we're going to get the information out, you know, for folks to, to know short of putting it on every radio station, every television station, you know, or something else.
Everyone watches this.
Of course, everyone watches Channel 22 regularly on Monday nights. Yes, absolutely. So, so whatever else we need to do, we need to do those things. The other thing is on the campus plans, and Robert, you mentioned academic, an academic focus. I'm hoping that that's what they are and not just some gigunda wish lists on whatever is they hope that they can do sometime in the future with some kind of, you know, signature program 10 years from now or whatever it is. I mean, I hope they're being realistic about what they actually need. You know, are there holes in the walls in the bathroom like it, like there were at Zilker once upon a time? Or, you know, are there, you know, you know, drainage issues and flooding issues like there are at some schools? So those are the kinds of things that I hope they're looking at aside from, I mean, and improving their academic programming, whatever that is. But if it's just, you know, some kind of pie in the sky, I hope that they realize that that's not what this is about. I mean, is that, I, I, what is it that they're being told on the campus at, to the, what are the campuses being told about what their plan should be focused on?
My understanding, it, it is academics. A lot of the systematic repairs either came through project managers, even though there may be some incorporated in those plans. But at the very least, I think that what we do is begin to build a database starting this year for next bond packages that this campus for many years has thought about this futuristic hope of their campus being a signature program of X, Y, or Z. And that we begin to document that and see how, what the steps are in order to accomplish it. We're not going to be able to accomplish a lot of those items because of dollars, but we can at least begin the process of having them ready for the next bond package, which I think is important to those campuses that they get documented.
Right. And of course, the signature programs would need to go through the administration before they get to, before they do them, of course. On the community meetings, my experience has been that there is, can often be overrepresentation by some campuses and significant underrepresentation in other campuses. And so, and, and oftentimes, that overrepresentation is misunderstood for, you know, some kind of broad, you know, saying or a broad, broad representation for a larger community. I think it's really important that our campuses know that it's important that they be represented because, because if not, then should there be, I don't know, media or something covering the event? It can be made to look like the only place that anybody cares about is X campus and nobody cares about anything else to come and, and even talk about. So there's no problem at those other campuses. So I just think it's real important that we encourage people to participate. You know, it's just like voting. You know, you've got, you have to, you have to come and talk and share with us what's going on and what you need and what you would like to have so that we can start planning. And again, I do appreciate all the work y'all have done. You all have done a lot of work for the district over the last many years. I want to thank you all very, very much.
Trustee Moya, I'd like to follow up on the school plans. So it's not really just a wish list. There's a template that they have to fill out and it's not, it's not. And then it's also, we're also going to be looking at the educational specifications and that's where the associate superintendents come in at because everything will be vetted through them to make sure that it aligns with the plans for, for that school and that vertical team.
Okay, good. Because I was just going to say, and the vertical team, make sure that it's all consistent with, from, from elementary through high school as far as the, the programming and if there are signature programs like in some of the vertical teams with digital media or whatever it is. Okay, thanks.
Again, I would like to echo my colleagues and thank you for the work that you are doing and have done. My question kind of speaks, speak to 21st century learning. We have just completed a TASB conference and one of the things that most of the workshops, a lot of the workshops we're on, we're on 21st, 21st century learning and tech, the use of technology in the classroom. And I'm hearing quite a bit of, of talk about blended learning being used in the district. And I know at one point, we had issued to some campuses a laptop for every student. I know that was not district-wide. And as, as those campuses are focusing on possible, possibly implemented, implemented, implementing blended learning, we know that a lot of, at least the research that I have done, really centers around the use of technology to deliver that type of, of, where teachers can work with some kids and then others can work on computers and so forth and so on. So I'm hoping that, that as, as we're looking at the bond, that we are looking at 21st century learning and the use of technology and how we can incorporate technology and actually how we can ensure that it's, it's somewhat, I know it's, it's hard to do, but I'm hoping that we can, as we look at this bond, that, that can be a strong focus of how we can ensure that we have technology on, on all of our campuses and not just limited to two or three computers in a classroom. And again, I know some, some campuses have the cows which can't be used by all of the students at the same time. So I'm just hoping that we can kind of initiate a strong focus of, of getting, well, just point-blank getting computers so that every child can have some type of technology, whether it's iPod, iPad, laptop or whatever. But I think we, we are to the point where we should have been there a long time ago. I know I had mentioned even the Abacus because back in the day, we had, we didn't have computers, we had Abacus. So we didn't have little calculators, we had an Abacus. But I, I think it, we are at the point.
She grew up in Asia.
We all had a, yeah, the Abacus. Exactly. But I think we are at the point where, there were wooden bees. We're at the point where I believe that, that we need to have, our, our kids need to have technology in their hands. And we know that it can replace books, just get books and they, they can have e-readers or whatever, but it's time that we moved into the 21st century.
Thanks. Other comments, questions? Ms. Torres.
Beginning of technology, there you go. I want to build on one thing that Ms. Bradley said because I was at a presentation by Klein ISD and the important thing that they emphasize, and I think it's, write down what you're talking about and what Mr. De Jesus said, but I may even want Dr. Dowd to be up here for this. And, you know, the whole theme, I think, from this superintendent has been that facilities should support the academics and it shouldn't be the other way around. And the Klein ISD folks said that when they considered technology, it wasn't technology just to get everybody a computer, it was that technology should enhance the learning and that you should have a strong academic program and that technology should enrich that program by making it engaging, making it innovative and making it a more exciting experience for students. And so I guess, I guess I'd like to understand how, from an academic standpoint, we are using this opportunity to support the future vision of our academic program so that we do, as Ms. Bradley said, look to the future in different ways of employing technology to strengthen that academic experience. Because Mr. De Jesus, I, I completely agree with you. What's going to sell this bond is to show that we're strengthening the academics. But what I also tell people, if you don't get kids to school, I don't care how good the program is, it's not going to help you. So attendance is important. How do you keep kids engaged? What are those sorts of things? But once you get them there, we don't want to bore them to tears. So what, what have you been communicating or where, where is the academic fold into this, as Mr. De Jesus said? And how, to Ms. Bradley's point, as we look to the future and the 21st century skills and the way to deliver that, what are we doing that for the next six years, we will be looking to implement in the classroom?
Okay. Trustee Torres and trustees, Dr. Karstar Finn. So we're approaching this in a multifaceted way. Clearly, engagement has to be the centerpiece of what we do at all levels so that kids, number one, are with us, they're going to stick with us, and so we're going to stick with them. We're doing this in the context of creating students that have the habits of mind to be able to engage in the 21st century. And clearly, technology plays a role in that. But it goes way beyond technology from an academic standpoint, as you all know. And so we think of it in four parts. First, it's about kids mastering the content. So we have to be, you know, really sure that teachers know what they need to teach, understand the essential questions around that, and then are able to deliver consistently good instructional lessons. So the what, the mastery of the content. We have to do that in the context of critical thinking and problem-solving scenarios. And so it's not enough, I think I've said before, for teachers to ask good questions. That's important. But what's even more important is for students to ask good questions. And the only way that they can do that with any sort of authenticity is if the content that they're learning, it connects to their real life, to their world, to their context. That's what's going to propel them to self-directed learning, which is where you get the rigor around the instructional program. And so we can do this through models such as blended learning, which provides for the opportunity for kids to be excited and engaged with the content through the use of technology, but also because teachers know how to engage and utilize strategies such as a flipped classroom, for example. So in a nutshell, and, and just in the interest of time, that's essentially what we're working on, professional development and a three-tiered evaluation. And PD model is important because it's not about, it's not just about providing teachers with, you know, training, but it's then about getting into the classroom and making sure that they're able to implement that, that they have the resources and the, the mental hooks to be able to make it happen in the classroom. And then that they're able to take it to the highest level of professional development, which is to sort of work with their peers to present the information that they're learning, to be able to grow the cadre of teachers that are able to do a good job consistently. What we know is that we can change a student's academic trajectory if a teacher can implement fairly ordinary but effective, consistently effective lessons in the classroom. And so that's a big focus of our superintendent and of the academics team together with the schools' folks.
So from a practical standpoint and what we have done in some of the past bonds, just as we did with our schools where we didn't know exactly where the new school was going to be built, we later designated the location, and I'm using this as a, as an analogy. We may or may not know exactly what we're going to be doing in technology in year five, but we know we need to be planning for that. Do we have a way to allow for those types of flexibilities in terms of the technology to where we know we will need a specific change, but we may not have that change? And so we're providing the flexibility and the bond to do that? Or, or is that not possible through the mechanisms that we have for technology? Or is that not possible through the mechanisms that we have for technology?
Dr. Karstarfin.
Yeah, so Mr. Torres, I would argue, given what I've seen from the technology list, the answer to your question is no. Our technology list, and I would say, for what it's worth, how academics falls into technology right now, what's been prioritized from top to bottom starts with what just about every part of our efforts have begun with, is like the basic systemic upgrades and improvements, right? So I have a teachers advisory group, you know, and we are moving a lot of things to a technological level. We have SchoolNet where we put our curriculum, we've got formative assessments in there. But if you're a teacher and you have to use the tools of our technology in the classroom, make no mistake, those things are slow, stalled, old, and we don't have like a great recycling system for how we get the, you know, the newer, faster technology into the hands of teachers. And I think we've talked about this before, Mr. Schneider talked about the whole, you know, bring your own device concept and how we're, that's an example to me of something that could be in the future and are we setting up some of the infrastructure for what that would mean? I can, I feel like we have not had that conversation as an organization. So once you get through like the critical need stuff, there's a lot of technology around improving basic systems, finance, human resources, which are also large and incredibly expensive. And then it's the debate of, are we going to continue investing in, what are the carts? Innovation stations? Are those already sort of out of date and should we be looking at something else? Most people argue finish innovation stations as a huge part of what we've talked about for technology. But I would say that's definitely not in the area of what you're talking about. And so, and I think the other big heart of the debate is, are we trying to get the latest technology in the hands of all, you know, like people who are in a classroom at minimum? And then the second piece is, should we also be doing that for students, right? So up to pretty cost-rehibitive notions as well. But from what I've seen in the list, I mean, it is, it is really following, in my mind, past commitments, current technology plan, but not with a keen eye for the future. And bringing that, you know, we only have like, what is it, two schools that are really talking about blended learning? Paul, Cruz, is it two or three? Yeah, so, you know, even with that, you know, we've, you know, we've, you know, we're trying to get some pilot work done, but it's still very slow and coming. So I, you know, I can't remember who I talked to about it. It might have been, I don't know, I've talked to so many people about bond stuff. But I know that's one that I really want us to go back and look at. I don't think we've quite gotten our arms around what it is we're saying we'd like to do differently, if anything at all, about how we're educating kids for the future. And if we're banking on this bond doing any part of that, there's no cutting-edge work from what I've seen and heard explained. And, you know, that may or may not be fair, but when you look at the buckets of things, I don't, you know, I'm not particularly, you know, inspired by just, you know, finishing innovation stations for the purpose of finishing innovation stations. It's, you know, it's a huge investment. Is that where we really want the money to go? If the answer is yes, I'm, you know, I get it and we can do that. But, you know, those things are going to timeout so quickly. Some already have, you know, the ones that we had to hook up with wires and everything else, now everything, now we can do it wireless. So before we even got to finish the bond work on them, the technology's changed so much that what we've already done, we need to go back and update and make them all wireless. So I think, I think it would behoove this district to really spend some time teasing out all those things in technology and really doing a hardcore job around academics. And so one small piece that I know you mentioned, but I just want to put a finer point on it, is professional development. You know, we spend, and I know Nicole's given us the money, the dollars multiple times, although I can't remember it off the top of my head, Nicole Conley Abram. But do you know the bucket of money for PD? Yes, so, you know, so we're finishing 50 million in like everything that we do, but we know we have a very small, if not almost nonexistent, program of online PD. So if we're going to do that, you know, delivering that, that means on the receiving end, people have to have the right technology to be able to experience that kind of, you know, that kind of technology and access to programming. But it's nowhere near what I know we've talked about before.
Well, I just think two things. One, I think we do need to move towards a way to have every student have access to a device. And what that device is, you know, is going to be different probably for every student. But the other thing is, and this we need to work with our bond console on, is if we assume we're going to have a device or carts or whatever it is, that we work with the bond console to allow us to have the flexibility to change if the technology changes in two years and we want to go a different route and not be bound by a specific device or a specific item, but a, an item that, you know, as you identify a more appropriate way to engage those students through a different curriculum approach, that we have the flexibility to use those funds for that purpose and not something that was written in black and white and locked us into a particular item, for lack of a better word. Because I do think that's really what we need to do is, I mean, if we're not moving towards ensuring that kids are going to have some sort of a device or that we need to provide them a device, and if we don't have the flexibility to plan for that, then we're going to be behind in six years and we're never going to get caught up.
Okay, other comments or questions? Mr. Guzman.
I was thinking that we're all familiar with the digital divide. And in fact, the technology divide is a lot bigger, a lot more significant. And when we engage our students, we are, in fact, as a byproduct of that, engaging their parents and maybe narrowing that digital divide. The interest of the technology companies, I think, should be quite significant from the standpoint of, obviously, if you, if you're, that you increase their consumership by increasing, by narrowing the technology divide. So I'm wondering that how we can bring them to the table, to work with us, not only in terms of how the technology is developing, and maybe, maybe we have, maybe you have, how the technology is developing and what we can expect by the time that the bond issuance would take place, if we could glean some intelligence from them in terms of what that would be. But we have a, we have a real good program going on in Dove Springs by the River City Foundation Organization, which are working. The program is small, but very, very significant and very good. It makes real good strides and a good impact. And it's a whole family. They have to actually agree to a contract of sorts to go to the meetings and attend and attend the training before they're actually engaged in the training itself. But it's that kind of effort as well in terms of partnering, partnering at the community level, I think, that we're going to be able to meet some of those needs.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, let me give you a couple of thoughts. One, again, just to reiterate, thank you all and to your entire team for doing this. These things are heavy on process, right? It's just a lot of the process. But at the end of the day, the bond program feels like a lot of art, you know? It's just, what is it that we think the community is going to accept, which is important? But what is it that we really need? What are our kids' need? It requires a lot of judgment, which is why it's so important to have people like you willing to spend the time to do it. It's easy to say, and we got to figure this out, but we know that our schools are all different in design and size, they're in different locations with different students with different needs. And it's not easy to say, here's the, you know, the black and white answer that we're going to have. Even when you look at equity, it's hard to figure that out. Even the geographic footprints are different, they're designed in different ways. And to Mr. Schneider's comment about capacity, I don't get caught up as much on that because I think ultimately we have to define, we have to use judgment, and you all have to use judgment about how do you best address it? There's no perfect answer. Our classrooms are not designed exactly the same way, they're not exactly the same size, they changed over time, the nature of classes we're offering from when the buildings, many of the buildings were built are very different. So I think, you know, again, I trust that you all will apply judgment to try to deal with that, but I'm not particularly caught up on trying to get an exact, precise measurement and all this stuff, because I think it does require a little bit of art to it. I want to address the 2013 May, as I do think we ought to look to go in May 2013. I think the, for lack of a better term, the deck is clear right now with respect to others. We'll know more about it after we get through November, and the city and the healthcare district will give us some indication of where the public is. But I do think that there was pretty clear direction from many in the community to sequence and prioritize the various needs of the various governmental jurisdictions to not overwhelm any taxpayer group at any one time. And I think looking at May 13 makes sense for us. If we push it out, I think then we run the risk of overlapping with ACC and others, a potential tax ratification election for us. We know there's school finance litigation going on, we know there's legislative session. So it's not time to do a TRE yet because we have to let that get sorted out. But it does feel like, at least to me, it's time for a bond election. I guess I'm of the mind to say we ought to look to try to go to what we think the public is willing to accept and support, because it's their decision of whether they're willing to pay the freight to support the facilities that we need. And I think you all are good indicators of what the public is thinking. And hopefully, the public input will give us a reinforcement of that, where they are to shake out. To my mind, if that's three cents, that may be where we need to go. I know that demand will exceed the amount of dollars available, no matter where we end up, because we're already over a billion dollars and that's without all the campus level plans and all the other stuff that's out there. So there's going to be some reductions between demand level and what we can afford and what our taxpayers are willing to support, and that's just going to be part of the territory. I think there's a number of, I guess, question for, this is really for Nicole, if she's over there. Do we know if there's any additional pennies that our tax rate has to go up to fulfill the 2004, 2008 bond program? We're done? So we can, we can meet the needs of all those two programs as we finish them out with the existing tax rate? Okay. I think that's helpful to know, so we don't, if we go to the public again for, and what's going to be a little bit confusing, as it always is, is you go tell the public what you think the tax rate will be, but it doesn't occur day one, it phases in over time as the actual programs roll out. And so far to date, at least since I've been on the board before, the actual tax impact has been less than the rate that we told them it would be because the tax base continues to grow and none of the school finance rules under INS, that actually benefits us because there's a bigger tax base which supports a higher debt load. It's, debt works against us on M and O, as we know, because the higher tax base means more money goes to the state under recapture. So I think it's good, talk about your, I guess, this theme of technology that we're dealing with, and I think there's lots of issues between the students, the staff, the district, technology, and even the parents. How do we open up the district? And there's issues of access, you know, the cloud, what's available, what devices work, what's the content, how do you use it? And I think to where Dr. Dowd was going, there's a lot of people talking in lots of different places across the country about how do you do that? And I think to the extent that we can at least think about, and maybe you all can think about, the concept of the undesignated dollars for technology, sort of a placeholder, like we do for land. We don't say where we're going to have a piece of land. Matter of fact, I think two or three bonds, we said, we had undesignated schools, but it might make sense to just put some dollars in reserve. I believe ACC did it for land banking. You know, they weren't sure what they were going to buy, but they knew they were going to need to buy some land. And so they land banked and had some resources to do it. So I think there's a lot of discussion about that, but I'm going to suggest this is sort of an operational thing for the superintendent to consider. And I know you're probably already working on it, but you're, I think we've talked about this under the portfolio of options and the SERPY folks, which is Center for Re Design, Reinventing Public Education. But what we really have a hard time doing, I think, is really think tanking R and D, what the new 21st century learning environment really needs to look like. We're so caught up in the here and now. And when you think about what digital education is going to look like, what blended learning looks, needs to look like, what a flipped classroom needs to look like, distance learning, you know, the ability to adjust equity because you can offer something in one place but other kids can take it, but you may not be able to afford to operate it and offer it at every place at every time. And there's a lot of ways to do it. We have a great forum in Austin, which is South by Southwest EDU. When you go to that, where instead of the TASB conferences, TASB sort of talks about what they're doing now, you go to South by Southwest EDU and people are talking about what they really are thinking about, something in the future. And it's almost like, how do we do that? And then to the point of maybe put some money aside that allows us to not have to have all those answers by May 13, but know we're going in that direction and we don't use the money and draw it down unless we actually have good, solid plans. But we're prepared for that because if we go after a bond program, we're not going to be able to go after another one anytime near, in the near term, or at least for another few years. So I think it's important to deal with technology, but I'm going to go back to what I think Vince said, and I'm going to try to build on your theme a little bit, which is the healthy, fit, and ready to learn, or fit, fit, healthy, and ready to learn for our kids. But I think the concept of our facilities, this is a little bit simple, is fit, healthy, and ready to teach, which may not be the right way. But our facilities need to be fit, and that has a broad definition, they need to be healthy, our kids have to have clean air, they've got to be able to operate in a safe environment, protected from the weather and the conditions. But they've also got to be able to be prepared to let our teachers teach, and really it's broader than teachers, right? It's all of our educators and staff. Because we have a tough time in today's economic climate providing a competitive salary. And that's just flat out, it's a tough time. We are asking more and more of our people, and we can't pay them. And the legislature dictates on school finance, what we have, dollars per kid, we have to ask the voters for a dollar in the future, and we give a significant amount of that for recapture. But what we can potentially affect is the working conditions for our people, both in terms of how we treat them, how we operate, but also the environment in which they operate. And a lot of people would be more happy if they go to a place where they feel like it looks good, it feels good, it's clean, it's safe, there's, you know, facilities that are, that are modern. We can afford that. That's what bonds allow us to do, and maybe do it without dramatically increasing the maintenance and operations side of things. So I think we need to think about that as the 21st century learning environment. I really commend Mr. Torres for thinking about that. And then as we shift about that, how we focus on the whole child. Because there, and that incorporates things like athletics and fine arts and technology. And Dr. Karstarfin's been adamant about that, any given child, the whole child, that's part of the values of this district and our community. So I think we need to look at that and figure out, how do we bake that into what we're trying to do? I think you're going to have a baseline of the facility stuff, stuff that we just have to do because we just have to. Roots got to get fixed, we can't leak, we've got campus level plans, central office stuff, stuff that just has to get done. Then there's going to be stuff that we have to deal with because of demographic trends. We just know there's growth and even our existing facilities may not be able to accommodate it. And the reality is, we have a value in our community of neighborhood schools. And we can talk about changing all the boundaries we want, and it all sounds great till we start telling kids that you moved to this house and you're going to go to this school, now you get to go to that school. And then it breaks out. Mr. Schneider knows from his own neighborhood, when there was boundary adjustments to the new school, it was chaos. So we got to deal with that, but that is not as easy as it sounds, we're just going to move kids. And then a lot of it, our capacity is for elementary schools, which are not near where the kids are. And I don't know about y'all, but I'm not a big fan of sending my elementary school kids halfway across town, hour in traffic, to try to get to this place that there is space. We want our neighborhood schools, particularly as it relates to elementary. So, but I think the demographic component's going to be there. But I do think that there's a long-term strategy, which come up somewhat within two of the next two AFRs, which hopefully you all will be able to stick around, which is the arts and the athletics. And that, those are broad-based. I mean, even though they're AFRs, the A is annual, to me, those two items are much bigger than annual. They really are, talking about making our facilities, particularly arts and athletics, much stronger for the long term. It's not a programmatic decision for one year. I mean, there is some element of that within those two things about the athletics and fine arts programming, but some of the facility recommendations that are baked in there, I think are, are you trying to get it to me? I saw it a minute ago, sorry. So the, they really are trying to get a tremendous facility jump from where we are today. And I think what we also have to realize in terms of educating the whole child, we also have to look at what our kids' environment is. And I'm going to say, our kids don't just operate in the environment of Austin ISD. I mean, when they participate in extracurriculars, be it sports, fine arts, or anything, they also go visit other campuses and other districts and see their facilities. And they come back to our facilities and see how inadequate they are. Our parents go to those facilities and they go to the bathrooms in the locker rooms or in the bathrooms at the facilities, and they say, oh my gosh, they're actually clean and they're modernized. And ours, you come back and you think it's embarrassing. And I think we really owe it to our community, to our students, to our families, to upgrade our facilities so that they're competitive. I'm not saying they need to be Allen, I mean, we don't need to be Allen. But we can make ours tremendously better in the context of who we are and the personality of Austin, Texas, and make, and really make a dramatic enhancement to that that's good for our, for our students. Because it is tough when you go to see somebody else's house and then you come back and... Because it is tough when you go to see somebody else's house, and then you come back to your house, and you're trying to create self-esteem and high-quality programs, and you feel like that your environment isn't fair. It's tough. And so I think to the extent that we can upgrade those facilities to something meaningful, at least in the ballpark, it may not be at the high end, but somewhere in the middle, we're not close to that today. And that's both in central Texas, when you look at the surrounding districts, but even statewide. I mean, we are woefully behind on both our fine arts facilities and our athletics facilities. I do think our performing arts center's going to be state-of-the-art. So thanks to that team, and our bond program, I think, was a big lesson learned, is that we had a huge support from the fine arts community to get the performing arts center in the 2008 bond program. I would hope we'd have the same level of energy and support from the athletics community to the extent that we're going to drive up the athletics program this time, and that we'd also get the fine arts community to come out and support not less, not only the district facilities, but make sure that our campus-level facilities are also as robust. Last, with respect to the academic facility recommendations, the annual, that's where it's tough because we're, we just, what happened, we're in one year, we're in December for this year, but we have these every year. And those have programmatic needs. They also have M and O requirements as well as facilities. And those are where, I think, the judgment is where it becomes tougher, is what can we afford from an operational standpoint that we don't put so much investment in, that we then can't afford to operate it? We see examples of districts around the state that builds schools that they then can't open. You know, I think we have to be cautious about that. And we also have to be recognizing that when we look at AFR for this year, then we'll also have some either next year or the following year, and we have to think about how all those fit in. So to me, the two that we're going to talk about tonight, the facilities in particular, well, actually all three, but the facilities and athletics are much broader than an AFR, to me. They really are long-term facility recommendations. The Clifton Center and the Rosedale are also on the same camp, which is the third item tonight, because there really is a huge facility component. It's not as driven by trying to implement a new program next year in response to, you know, the community needs. So I think there's going to be a mix of AFRs, but I think some of those are going to be much heavier in the bond side of things for y'all. And then ultimately, there's a cap. You know, all these are great ideas, but there's going to be more demand than there are dollars available, even if we go to what we think is maybe the high end of what the community will support. And that's when we'll come back to say, that's where judgment's going to come in. Well, we're going to have to rely on y'all and the input you get from the community, and ultimately come back and say, what do we think is the best combination of the package we can put together to the public, knowing we can't get everything in there, but we've got something that'll meet the needs of everybody, that hopefully have broad-based support. It'll be what the taxpayers are willing to support at the end of the day. So it's a tough job y'all have, but I think we're going in the right direction. I really don't think we ought to look to wait. I think that, I think y'all have done too much work at this point in time. The board won't vote on it until February, you know, so there's still time. If for some reason something happens between now and then that we feel like is going to deter us from moving forward, but it feels like y'all put so much effort into it, and I can't thank you enough, and there's still a lot of work to be done. But it feels like the time is right, the deck is clean, and there's an opportunity to really make a dramatic impact to our kids and to our families. And I thank y'all for the work you've done, and knowing it's not easy. But we've been very fortunate to have people like y'all willing to spend the time, along with your entire, you know, committee and all those that are willing to participate, on all the little subcommittees you even talked about. Don't mean to minimize my conum little, but all of the very important other subcommittees that are working. So thanks for all that great work. And so, Mr. Guzman.
It's, it's processed both from the standpoint of the bond issuance and the TRE. We talked, we talked before about what is it that we have to do in terms of introspection of our programs and, and looking at everything that we have at where we can have efficiencies and so on, before we can go out to the public and say, look, we've looked, we've looked at ourselves and we know that we've done everything possible that we, we can in-house. And I think you mentioned that you all had looked at that as well. And I think that's important because, I mean, we can go on and on and on, and the process can go on and say, but we need, now we need to look at this other thing. And if we do that, obviously we delay the process. And I, for one, don't want to do that on either one of the, of the items. So do we, do we have a plan, a process to where, you know, we can say, okay, we've, we've looked at it and we're satisfied that we're there, and we can move forward, and we think that the public will, will be willing to accept it at this, at this time?
Let me take a shot at this. Dr. Struff, you're way in. I think there's two different paths here. On the bonds, I think the benefit of having a bunch of community members is they've had a chance to look at the information that's going to say, where are we and what are the needs of our facilities? And there's not a lot of savings. We can't really say we don't need that stuff, so I think the bill will make the case. When we go for TRE and we ask for operating dollars, I think the case is going to be stronger, that we can say we've, we haven't, we've actually operating very lean. I think the data's there already. I mean, our general administration expenses, percentage of the total, is very low relative to other districts. I think we've been pretty flat for so long that we've squeezed pretty much every place we can squeeze. People are hurting, but you do have to be able to show that. And I think there's a lot of, there's a little bit of time between now and then to build that case. We don't know what the legislature's going to do to us. But at least from my perspective, for the bond, I think there's a case that can be made, and one of the benefits is having a bunch of community members that have actually looked at that, that so it's not just us internal folks that are telling the story, but the people in the community that have come as part of this advisory group to basically say, we also have looked at it, and we believe that the need's there. There's not quite an advisory group, at least historically, for a tax ratification election for M and O in exactly the same way. But I do think that's going to come into play as the district moves forward and we get prepared for a tax election on the M and O side. I don't know if that's responsive to your question, but. Okay, other comments or questions at this point? Okay, you guys did a great, because you presented, and then you've kept thinking we asked you a bunch of questions, and y'all just got a chance to listen. So I'm going to ask you, Sandy, is there anything that you feel like you want input on, or a question that you felt like you needed to get some, either guidance or direction on that you have not gotten, that would have been helpful to get as part of this conversation?
Trustees, the tri-chairs spoke before today's meeting, and what we would ask the board is, as you play out the AFR scenarios, especially with the athletics and with the fine arts, that maybe you could help us a little bit by maybe taking some of those scenarios that you feel are not going to be able to be maintained on the table. So we don't have a lot of scenarios still to kind of deliberate as to what if this scenario goes and what if that one goes, and maybe you can eliminate one scenario out of each one, or however many you feel. Not pick a scenario, but maybe kind of give us a little bit of guidance in helping us out on that, because these are big-ticket items.
So it's really, the question is, for example, I mean, because I don't, there may be, I guess, two components to it, one of which is, is one of them, I'm going to use an example, is one of them too much? I mean, is it, we asking stuff that we just basically say we probably, just our gut tells us we can't, wouldn't support, versus the amount that's being at? We'd love all the things on there, but we just don't think that, that feels like it's too high in terms of an amount of money. Carolyn, what are you thinking?
Or, for example, the career and technology scenarios. Right now, what we have seen as a committee is, I believe, four different scenarios being proposed, and then a laundry list of other items. So if you could eliminate at least one of those scenarios so that we have a better feel for how much money is really on the table for career and technology. So any, anything that you can eliminate so that we don't have to still continue discussions or wondering if it's going to be included would be very helpful.
Okay, and so just, the board note, the, the career and technology education is not coming forward tonight, right? That's, that's another discussion, along with the South High School, but tonight, the three we have. So it's trying to give some help to you. If we, if we know we're not going to do something, let you know, so it just lets you know that...
Remove it so we don't have to consider it.
Okay, that's very helpful. Mr. Guzman?
Remove it altogether, or?
Not remove, not remove career and technology, but limit it to two scenarios or three scenarios instead of four scenarios and a list.
So you're saying?
It's too broad right now for us to really critique it and even ask intelligent questions.
You're asking for removing it as opposed to prioritizing?
Narrowing the options. So maybe you keep two instead of four. Dr. Kostarfen.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, as we've explained and tried to explain to the, both the public and anyone else who's interested in this process, is that, you know, this is where we start. We work with a lot of people in the community. There are a lot of different ways we can go about it. In the interest of, you know, people's interest in knowing where we are along this process, you all know, we start with, well, you probably don't know unless you've sat in all these meetings, I mean, but Ramon de Jesus has with me, and we start with like 20 different approaches. I mean, and it keeps getting narrowed down and narrowed down. So by no means have we intended to present to the CBAC for that we expected them to go vet. Four is where we are right now. And we have planning teams and community meetings, as you know, where people give us feedback and they get tighter and tighter before we ask the board for supporting a recommendation. And that is our work. So by the end of the day, in December, the CBAC will have the administration's one recommendation. And I don't, and I think pushing it any faster than December would be an injustice to our AFR process. Like, that's the minimum we need to do. So there are planning teams that are working on it. Some are already narrowed down to two or something, but some are just bigger and people have many different ideas about it. But by December, they will be narrowed down to an administrative recommendation, which will be one, so that when you go into your work into January, February, and March, and so on, we'll have those numbers and those recommendations collectively put together. But, but I just want to remind everybody that the CTE one is in that other category. Remember, we have the columns. It's in category, column C, which...
It's in D.
Oh, it's in D?
Yeah.
Yes.
Significant capital investment.
Right, so it has a significant capital investment, but we haven't even committed yet that, you know, that we really feel like even using the rest of the school year would be enough to say we would be ready for anything. It's just, it's very large and it just, I know that the amount of vetting has not happened around CTE. And we're just, people are still doing things like we were doing at the beginning of District One or any of the other ones, where folks are making planning trips and they're going to visit sites, but that, those, and that's why they're later in, they're like the last ones you're going to hear about because they are not developed at any level compared to the ones that you have seen or that you're seeing tonight.
But I think that the, the request from you three is fair, which is, to the extent that we know something that just tells you that this was not applicable, and I think it's part of discussion with the administration, we need to let you know as quickly as possible because as you're trying to figure out, I'm making up numbers, right? If you're trying to figure out how to allocate $800 million, if one scenario is 50 and one is 20, that's taking up $30 million that could be going to something else if it's still on the table. And it depends on the prioritization. So I think to the extent that we can get there, now, this may mean that the timing is going to have a little bit of parallel pathing because if this is December, you guys are trying to get a preliminary report, we don't actually make a decision until February, there may be some modifications that are going to have to occur along the way as we get down to February. And there might be some ranges that are, that are being worked with for some of those others. And you can kind of, what you can finalize, we may work with, and then some of the others might be incremental. But it's going to be tough. I mean, this is unfortunate, but I think there's a lot of different activities going on at one time. And a lot of these, I think, are to the credit of the administration and to y'all, are some big thinking. I mean, the career and technology, the arts, the athletics, there's a lot of big stuff that has longer-term, multi-year implications we're thinking about right now. And part of that makes sense because we're doing a bond right now, and we won't do another bond for five years in technology. So we really do need to think about a lot of that now before we go out for a bond program. Otherwise, we may have to wait five years before we actually get there. So I think the timing is challenging, but I think it's the right one. And sorry, I'll give you a better answer, which I'm not, but hopefully we'll get there quicker. Mr. Guzman?
I'd like to see how we can reconcile the, the, given, given the guidance, which I think is a reasonable request, but at the same time, not given the impression that we're dictating it or that we're presupposing or, or, or making a conclusion at this end as opposed to allowing the whole process at the community level to, to work. And, and so maybe reconcile it to where we get the guidance from there too as well in the, in the hearings and the public meetings, and blend it in terms of the guidance that we give you so that we get the buy-in ultimately.
I think it's a good, you know, we're, we don't want to, we don't want to short-circuit the process and then jump to a decision before the process is through. So it may be a little bit challenging over the next couple of months. Hang with us. Thank you for all you're doing, past, tonight, future. And then if we actually do decide to get the bond program, then helping us get it to the, to the public and let them understand what we're, we're asking for. Y'all done some great work. Thank you very much. If y'all would like to, you're welcome to stick around. We're going to talk about the, the next three AFRs, which will have an implication...
Paul and Pauline?
They can, they can go back. You're welcome to stay up, or they can sit back.
Out of the hot seat.
Okay, we're going to shift gears to the AFRs. And there's, we have 15 minutes allocated for this item. These are pretty meaty items, so we'll see if we can get done pretty quickly. Dr. Kostarfen?
Mr. President, trustees, since the September 10th, the administration's presented groups of potential preliminary 13, 14 annual academic and facility recommendations for possible board action on December 17th. Tonight, the administration is seeking board input and feedback on three potential AFRs that we're considering for referral to the Citizens' Bond Advisory Committee, which you just heard from, for possible inclusion in their scope of work for the next bond. They also have impacts, as Mr. Williams just talked about, on our operating budgets as well. So as we keep looking at these bond projects, to run any of these programs still requires staffing, electricity, water, and everything else that goes with it. And so just to give everybody a fair warning, as I put the budgets, the draft budgets, of course, the preliminary budgets in the back so that you could understand the impacts that some of these may have. And I have to say that while there's a lot of hard numbers on what it costs to build something, very soft numbers when it comes to operating it. And that's what, in part, what we're trying to work through. Now, to absorb some of these costs that are, involve M and O, it would probably mean that as we think forward to a tax ratification election as a permanent funding stream for some of these things, these would be some of the areas that we would have to seriously consider and understand where they fall in a timeline for implementation in case, you know, you're not able to fund the M and O. So we have a lot of things to think about later, but I want to put those on the table now because these, this is the beginning of probably the most significant investments that we will have. Now, each of the AFRs we're going to talk about tonight are like all the rest of them. They have planning teams and in some cases, you know, almost 100 people, and others 20 to 30, but there's a lot of folks working on the side in subgroups and planning teams to work these through. So I have the Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Pauline Dow, our Chief Schools Officer, Dr. Paul Cruz, and Lawrence Friar, our Chief Operations Officer, here to help present components of the AFRs. So where they've been my lead officer, they will present those areas, and then Mr. Friar will talk you through the different scenarios within it so he can tie the facilities piece to the academic design. We're going to start with Rose Dale and Clifton, and Dr. Dow will kick that one off. And then we'll go through all three and then loop back around for a discussion.
Okay. Our district serves almost 8,500 special education students, which make up almost 10% of our district's student population. Of that, some students are served by specialized programs located throughout the city in AISD. The Rose Dale School serves students with significant cognitive and/or medical disabilities, and these students may attend school, or may attend the school for their entire school years from early childhood to age 21. Clifton Career Development School provides students with disabilities quality instruction in areas of career and technical education to help them achieve industry-standard certifications and skills in certain career clusters. As any of you know who have visited Rose Dale School and the Clifton Career Development Schools, you're aware that these are in need of upgrades, both of these facilities are in need of upgrades. While both of them meet federal and state requirements and improvements have been made over the years, additional facility upgrades would ensure a full, rich educational experience for all students served at the two sites. Significant time has passed since facility improvements were made at these two schools. Both Rose Dale and Clifton Schools require, require updates to building systems, upgrades to correct accessibility deficiencies, and general modernization upgrades to better accommodate academic program needs.
President Williams, Dr. Kostarfen, Board of Trustees, this AFR includes four scenarios. Each of the scenarios involving Rose Dale includes basic safety renovations with the installation of ceiling horse systems and to replace other systems that have deteriorated over time while we improve access to all areas for the mobility impaired. Scenario one would be only these renovations. Now moving to scenario two, in addition to those renovations I just mentioned, that includes a six... includes a six-new classroom addition that would be constructed to address inadequacy of space for existing programs. So the estimated cost for these renovations and new construction would be $8.2 million. Now moving to scenario three, which now goes over to the Clifton Career Development School. And what this consists of is renovation at an estimated cost of $2.1 million. The renovations would include creating instructional space for culinary arts and improvements to conform to American Disabilities Act and Texas Accessibility Standards. And then the fourth scenario would combine scenarios two and three, which would be the Rosedale renovations and the classroom addition, and the Clifton renovation, and the total of that would be $10.3 million.
And so, and our next category is around the fine arts. So, Dr. Dow?
So now we're going to turn to the next...
Here's your turn on your mic. Sorry about that. Now we're going to turn to the next of the three AFRs being presented this evening. Over the past year, a comprehensive survey of arts education in Austin was conducted with a grant from the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. Gaps in educa, in arts education, especially at the middle school level, were identified, and the audit revealed that our students would benefit from arts-based instruction across the curriculum. Both the facilities and planning office and the, and the Fine Arts Department reviewed all AISD campuses to identify the critical needs and facility priorities over the next 10 years, including but not limited to evaluating and inspecting auditorium stage rigging systems throughout the district. At the heart of the Any Given Child Creative Learning Initiative is the focus on equity issues and priorities as schools attain an arts-rich status by, one, providing professional development and coaching for teachers, two, offering diversity of art forms and opportunities for students to explore cultural heritage through multicultural experiences, and by expanding out-of-school arts opportunities through leveraged community partnerships. This initiative combines the resources of the school district, the city of Austin, higher education, local artists, business, and philanthropic organization, organizations, and moves AISD from arts-involved to arts-rich status. Arts-rich schools achieve multiple student outcomes, including increased academic achievement, improved student engagement, and college and career readiness while meeting the needs of the whole student. The facility improvements would address safety issues and building expansions at secondary schools with inadequate space due to the high participation in their fine arts program, including additions to Bailey, Bowie, Keeling, and Merkison, and additions and renovations to Ann Richards School. This also includes the cost of updating the rigging systems district-wide.
In this case, I'm going to describe two different scenarios. The first is programmatic in nature, and that would involve implementing the Any Given Child Creative Learning Initiative district-wide by vertical team over a 10-year period. And we estimate the cost would be $2.2 million per year, or $22 million over their entire 10 years. A tax ratification election or other long-term funding source would be especially important to support this part of, of the, of this AFR. The other scenario is more facility-related and tied to the use of bond funds. It would address the most critical fine arts facilities' needs, such as securing and updating rigging systems in district auditoriums, and making additions to middle and high schools. Estimated cost would be $31 million. It can be viewed as a continuation of improvements initiated in the 2004 and 2008 bond programs. There's a map attached displaying the locations of earlier actions.
The final AFR for discussion this evening is a recommendation for secondary athletic program and facility improvements based on our program assessment results. Each year, overall participation in AISD athletics programming has increased. As, as a direct result, campus athletic facilities have been unable to keep pace with student enrollment growth. Our findings, which were similar to a study that was completed by the Northside Independent School District, show that students who participate in athletics have higher attendance, better academic performance, are more likely to be promoted, and graduate at higher rates, in some situations, up to 16 percentage points higher graduation rates. The district looks to provide student athletes with quality coaching, competitive schedules, and modernized facilities. Along with this, there will be high expectations for success. The scenarios are centered on increasing student access to strong and effective athletic programs in order to address growth and provide students with opportunities to exhibit integrity and sportsmanship on campus, in the community, and beyond. The preliminary AFR is centered on three broad strategies: retaining and recruiting high-quality coaches, increasing access to athletic classes and aligning athletic programming, and providing, I'm sorry, excuse me, and improving athletic facilities by implementing district-wide renovation upgrades and major repairs of existing campus and district athletic facilities. These design elements will increase access for greater percentages of students to participate in athletics to support improved academic performance for all students.
For this AFR, there are three scenarios ranging in cost from $82 million to $180 million. All three scenarios contain the elements in a basic $82 million estimate. It would cover improvements to practice and competition fields and gymnasiums, and replace artificial turf at Berger Nelson and House Park, and support stipends and flexible duty days for coaches, mandatory middle school athletic periods, and maintenance and building and grounds equipment. Scenario two would also include building upon that facility improvement, such as installation of synthetic turf on one practice field at 11 high schools, construction of on-campus laundry rooms for high schools, renovation of high school training rooms, and drainage improvements at central athletic facilities. The total cost for scenario two would be $113 million. Scenario three would add even more facility improvements, which include constructing a district-wide auditorium, restroom gymnasiums at high schools, concession stands and outdoor restrooms at high schools, and renovating and constructing additional tennis courts at high schools. A total cost of $179 million, roughly $180 million for scenario three, is the cost.
So, Mr. President, trustees, the board, this concludes our presentation. I wanted to just point you to the agenda item itself. Everything that we've described with, with additional detail is posted in the agenda item. And if you look past the actual agenda item, on the, on page 11, you'll see the attachments list, so you can look at the fact sheet, any kind of key PowerPoint presentations, and a budget for each one. So, so just, just so you know, then after you finish the first one, you can go to the second one, and so on. But this concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have. And the CBAC is still here, in case you have questions for them.
And they can listen attentively like they always do. Thank y'all for being here. Okay, so, let's start, let's just focus on the first one, which is Clifton and Rosedale, before we get to the other two, and see if there's any questions or comments with respect to the proposals and the four scenarios for Rosedale and Clifton.
And, and just so y'all know, we put, I don't know where it is. You know, just, in the same way that you asked the CBAC if they had specific questions, we tried to embed that in the agenda item, but the one about Rosedale was, you know, did you, did you prefer the idea of looking at both? One has heavier M&amp;O costs, that would be, you know, Clifton, whereas Rosedale, you're working within the same staffing, just really improving the quality of the facility is the big focus. So, you know, just wanted to see if, because the scenarios work, one, the other, both, kind of basic.
Okay. Comments or questions regarding Rosedale and Clifton? Ms. Moya.
Thank you for the presentation. Dr. Starfen, regarding Rosedale and Clifton, I don't know how we can't do everything that's needed for both of those facilities.
I'm glad to hear you say that.
I mean, I just, I don't know how we could not do that. And on a personal note, I have a cousin who participated in, that was at the Clifton Center, and I heard on a regular basis about the, the deficiencies and the needs of, of, of a cousin of mine who just now, I believe, graduated, because he's now 21. But, I, I mean, I just don't see how we could not do what's needed there to serve these students and give them what they need to be, those for Clifton, to be good citizens and participating in the community. So I...
Fourth scenario, four?
That would be four.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Other, other comments or questions? Ms. Snyder.
Mr. Friar, do you know the annual maintenance cost in terms of keeping these facilities up to what they need to be and not having continuing problems that we're addressing?
We can get that for you.
Let's figure I can get back to you.
Okay. And are these campus, I mean, these physical buildings, this physical location, the, the best way to provide this service? I mean, either, you know, do we look at, you know, combining the two as an example, or moving them to another part of town, building a bigger, newer facility to eliminate some of the maintenance needs? I mean, what, what was done?
Since we end up sitting in those kinds of meetings to hear those conversations, as far as Rosedale as a facility and a site, the feedback from the community and certainly the people that work in the school is that Rosedale is really part of that community, and people, you know, in the, in the neighborhood come in and really support the facility. We did have, as an earlier scenario, you know, a complete rebuild, a complete rebuild on the same site, a complete rebuild somewhere else. Rebuild on the same site, tear down, move into a new building. But, but there was a lot of interest in keeping the same building, but really bringing it up to a higher, more modernized standard, and, and that the community that it's in right now was, was really supportive. And they had a lot of examples about some of those areas. I can go back and look at my notes and revisit that, but I do remember those scenarios fell off of people's interest very fast. Redoing a brand-new facility was not of interest. Also, the Clifton facility was newer. I remember that conversation, that it was newer, and they didn't feel like a new facility or, or moving the facility would be necessary. So...
Dr. Starfen, it's nice that the neighborhood supports it, but, I mean, I would really be interested in knowing, you know, if there was a better place to put this, or, you know, what's the delta cost on, you know, continuing to maintain the existing facility versus building something that's new, modern, up to specs, code, everything else? So, do we have those figures available, or can you get them?
No, I told you, we don't have them available right now, but y'all, y'all are on the board, you know this. Running and operating a school building is, is much cheaper than building from scratch a new building in the bond. And no matter how you slice it, at least for the operating cost, for these kids, especially at Rosedale, our most critically fragile children in many cases, you know, we, it's, it's pretty expensive. And I can't remember the exact numbers per pupil, but, but it's still going to cost the same. It's not, it's not going to be less expensive for us to do. If you're just talking about efficiencies of buildings, absolutely. You know, this is an old building, but, but we'll get you those numbers and do a cost comparison. But, you know, you know, my read on, on, on those meetings is that we can, again, we're trying to narrow, but we can go back and, and explore these if the board wants us to. But pretty much, I feel very certain that there are a lot of people that were weighing in on this, that felt like that school should stay as it is, but that we need to invest and make it as nice as it should be for our most critically fragile children. And that is something I think we can do and, and do a nice job of, but, but is that the board's desire? Do y'all want me to go back and look at a, you know, a, a new build? We can bring that scenario back.
Well, what, what do you think you can, I mean, I guess the question is, are you thinking you can build a new facility for less than $8 million that could accommodate the children?
Mr. Williams, I, I don't know, but, I mean, you know, the general rule of thumb that I would be very interested in seeing, whether it's right or not, is that when, or facilities are old, such as this one is, that the continued maintenance and operation costs, as well as bond costs for doing upgrades at various increments, may be more than the cost of building a new facility. I know it's certainly proven to be so in other districts in the state, that they have done things like, you know, a tear-down in place, build a new facility, go from there with it. But, you know, I don't know what the numbers are here, and I'd like to at least know that somebody's taken a look at it and found the following. I mean, I'm not asking for, you know, don't break it down, light bulbs, door knobs, air conditioning vents, but, you know, tell me what the difference is.
Just, just high-level ballpark of what it would take to get the square footage and where you might cost to build it, because I think we're going to find, it's like, what's the cost to build an elementary school? It's very different, but to build a facility is going to be very expensive, and building a place would be very challenging, because we'd have to find someplace else for these children to go, and that would be a very difficult situation for us, because this facility's, you know, we'd have to find them all someplace else to move them once we built it. So, but if you want to just...
Mr. Williams, as Dr. Starfen said, that is the scenario that we looked at. So we do have figures for the cost to replace it with a brand-new facility. We just haven't worked out the delta between maintenance costs of the current facility compared to building a new facility, but the cost was significantly higher to build a new facility.
Mr. Friar, I mean, what I'm interested in seeing is, like, 10 years from now, if we do whatever upgrade's being talked about, plus continue to have to pay the standard maintenance and operation, do we come out ahead if we do something like a tear-down in place? I mean, use the radical example, tear down the building, build something new, then, you know, we still have to pay maintenance costs on that as well, but in the long run, over a 10-year period, is it cheaper to do that than it is to continue to just, you know, patch whatever needs to get done, or, you know, do the bond upgrade to take care of issues, that kind of thing? So...
Very high-level analysis. If it turns out that the gap is narrow, then you might have to do more detailed analysis. If the gap is large, then we, then it may be pretty apparent. Mr. Torres.
First of all, let me just say, I'm, I'm in agreement with keeping the school in the location, because it's a fairly central location for the, in the city, and for the kids that need to come there, it's a, I, I think it's, it's relatively easy to get to because of its central location. I'm not so sure I'm in the same place as Mr. Snyder is with regard to looking at a new facility, so if you come up with those numbers, I'd be curious to see what they are. But, but I can tell you what my experience has been, when we've renovated an old building and kept it an old building, but just made it looking newer, is you end up constraining yourself down the road in the future. And so I guess with this facility, we need to think about what types of expansion might you need. And I'll just give you an example. When we did this with Hill, and then we have to go back in and put in technology, we've had to put in air conditioning closets with all the technology into an old building that wasn't designed for that. And so when you start making those kinds of renovations to an old building, it's not cost-effective. You'd be much better off designing the whole building for what it should have been in the beginning. That may not apply to this population because of the types of changes you're going to have in the future, but I know it's been the case with Hill, and it continued to create problems because you have classrooms that are built for the same size they were 50 years ago. It's just a newer-looking inside of the building. So I think we need to keep that in mind in terms of how the needs for these children will change as we move forward, and will renovating an old building present more of a problem?
Ms. Moya.
Thank you. I wonder if the current location for Rosedale is large enough to where we could start a new build behind it, or to the side of it, and, and then transition, you know, our students into the, the new build, and then tear down and finish the build, so that we don't have to, because I was wondering the same thing, question you asked, Mr. Williams, about where would we relocate those students, you know, while we were building on that site? I can't remember how large the, the, the actual lot is, or the, the land is where Rosedale is, but I do know that when we had our, our retreat out there a few years ago, that, you know, I, I remember, as, as I walked around, I was, my observation was that it's an old elementary school converted into a, a facility to, to take care of and educate our, our most vulnerable students. school converted into a facility to take care of and educate our most vulnerable students. And there were rooms, it just didn't look like they were really equipped for, or meant to be what, obviously, they weren't meant to be what they were serving as now. So, I just wonder, could we start a new build behind it or to the side, and then just transition? And then we, because I would imagine that those families whose children go to school there would be thrilled with a new facility, with current equipment and all, to help them, whether it be lifting them or whatever it is.
We did look at that. And Kurt, I remember it didn't fit. Yeah. So, do you want to join us for a second? What you just described?
Yeah.
Well, it's not like you can't just do a start. If it was a regular school that just, you know, where we can, we could move kids and easily put them in portables or something. I mean, it's just, Rosedale is, for the child population, just, it's far more difficult. But for the actual space around that building, I know we talked about that, I remember seeing stuff, there wasn't enough space to build, move people in, and then try to tear down something and build again. And then, can you, do you remember any of that conversation?
Yes, ma'am. This is a very small site. There's only five acres involved. And to try to clear enough area to have a good footprint to start with, and try to maintain what we've got, even with portables, you know, and we use portables as a strategy to some time for temporary location. But with this population, it'd be awfully, awfully difficult to accomplish that.
So, if we have to figure out where the children would be housed, or, I mean, educated during the build time, perhaps we should inquire with some of our local partners, the city and the state and the county, and see what it is they can do to help us to achieve this, to make sure that these children receive all of the services and all the education that they need, and with the accommodation for our teachers to be able to be there and help them while we are constructing a new facility to, at that same location, should we decide to do a new facility.
Let's get the cost estimate and figure out how big a gap that is, and decide if it looks like it's worth pursuing, then we might have a lot of other process things we have to start looking at. If the gap is 20 or $30 million, then it may become something the board needs to think about. If it's one, it may be a lot easier to make that call. But I think it's just some ballpark, high-level analysis where we think it would be. And it may be just the most simple analysis, build-in place. If you were just to level the current place, put a new one in, what would it cost to actually get it to the level you want to have? Capital investment and then ongoing operating costs, ignoring salaries and things like that, because that would be replicated in both.
And also, because it's not, again, the population itself requires careful attention. So, part of that cost has to be where are kids going, right? And how are we going to take care of them at the level we have been taking care of them? So, it's got to be, that cost too is part of whatever we do for, going to level a building.
Well, I guess what I'm going is, if the delta between leveling the building and putting a new one is so substantial, it's almost like it doesn't even matter what the cost is to put them someplace else and to do the full cost analysis, because you've already made a determination that it's not worth the facility by itself. If the facility delta is very close, then you start thinking about, okay, what are the other costs that need to come in? What I'm trying to do is save y'all doing all of the possible work and all the possible scenarios, and layering the analysis, so that if the cost delta is significant, it may be that it's not worth it, that the investment in the existing facility makes sense. If the cost delta's narrow, or it looks like it's potentially viable, then you start having to consider the other factors that come into place. I'm just trying to save you some work. If you want to do all of it, feel free. Okay. Other comments or questions on this one? Ms. Bradley?
Just a quick question. How many students with, at Rosedale, do we have that are mobility impaired? Do we know?
Mobility impaired, I would have to get the details on that. Today, as of today, we have 75 students enrolled at Rosedale. And that number has gone up over the last six years, we pull that information.
Ann Jenkins, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. So, we'll have to find out.
I think it varies a little bit. Having seen the graduating class, you know, each year, it kind of varies. I mean, at some years, it seems like a lot of them are really dependent on a device to move them around. Almost in every instance, it requires somebody to help move them around. And even if they aren't requiring a device, they need some assistance to get up and downstairs, to move through the halls.
Every year, it seems like it's about half of the graduating class.
Okay. So, if we're looking at definitely, I mean, looking at renovations, which I believe on with Lori on this, I don't see how we could not. But if we're looking at building a new facility, we definitely have to be conscious about the fact of who we're serving here, because we would have to move the students somewhere. And portable just would not be acceptable. You just could not do that. So, if it's looking at how we, because I see we're talking about building, I think it's a wing in here, right?
Hmm.
Six additional classrooms. So, that would require space on the property, because you're not tearing down anything. You would actually be building. So, you'd be eating up pretty much that five acres with that wing.
But it would be doable?
No, I'm not saying it's not doable. I believe it's doable. But I'm just saying we would be eating up space, put in that wing. And I believe that it would be the less restrictive way of doing it, considering who we are serving. And we should always put that first. Looking at Clifton, one of the bullets here is reallocate administrative staff to be used for classrooms and repaint classrooms. How many rooms are we speaking of here? And did we not look at maybe building a wing, adding a wing? Because I know there's space there.
Trustee Bradley, looking at the numbers there, as far as capacity there, the projection was that there is sufficient capacity there to work with. And so, there's no need for an addition. We could just renovate, use the space that was already available.
I mean, I could support what's here.
Okay. Other questions or comments on this one? Okay. I'm going to say, I support it. I'm not sure necessarily, and this is just me, why this is exactly an AFR, you know, academic versus a facility program you need with all the other facility programming needs, unless there's something special about this one. I do think, unless, you know, just it's getting called out, because this one needs special attention, I think for me, scenario one, in the Clifton, we ought to do for sure. The scenario two, the incremental cost, I could also support. But I do think that we have to look at the trade-off, because it's $6 million more. We may just say, we got to do it, it gets built in. But we just know that if that $6 million that we're not going to spend on something else, and uses that part of the $800 million, $900 million of bond, I think we have to be careful as a board not to take some of them selectively. And then, I think it potentially causes the bond committee, we're telling them what to do on some of them and not others. And that may be okay. But to me, this feels like a facility thing more than programming. If the programming for the $135,000, I think makes sense on the AFR, the additional programming for them. But it feels like more, this is more of a facility play, unless I'm missing something, than it is a programming play.
If I could, if I may address that, President Williams, I mean, clearly, it's about upgrading the facility. But in order to fully implement, I mean, a very robust educational program for these students, we need to do some things to the facility to make it more accessible to kids. So, for example, the hoist. In order to allow kids to be more independent in terms of their mobility, we've got to have the hoists. In order to provide for more appropriate, developmentally appropriate recreational, we got to do some work to the gym. In order to allow for multisensory opportunities, programming opportunities for students, we don't currently have the appropriate space, we've got to make some modifications to classrooms so that that can happen. So, that's, it really does, because right now, the facility meets all of the federal mandates. I mean, we're meeting the requirements, but we have sort of reached a limit in terms of our infrastructure, to be able to provide additional programming to enrich the educational services to those students.
Okay. So, let me differentiate this, at least to me, between the other AFRs that we've did in the past, where we would do it, and we had, there was some capital and facility needs, and there was programming, and we were doing it without the benefit of a bond. We were going to do it either way. So, if you're saying is, if the bond was to fail, would you say we're still going to spend the $8 million out of fund balance?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. So, this is really a part of a bond program. So, to me, it feels different, because the AFRs are really things that we're doing. And it just so happens, there happens to be a bond program this year.
Okay.
Not, because next year, there may not be a problem. So, it feel, that's to me where the distinction is, the AFRs are happening on ongoing basis, with or without a bond. This one feels like it's got a very significant facility component to it, which we're doing because we have a bond, and therefore, it ought to be part of the bond process, not the AFR process. I totally agree that the message can be, this is a must-do, we need to do it. It needs to be part of the 600 or 800 million dollars that are part of the bond program, and that it ought to be baked into something that would send a definite due category. When the bond team is going through all the pieces, that this is one that's, I understand the senior cabinets come in and say, these are the ones that we would prioritize. So, I would say this would be at the highest part of the list. But I guess, just to me, I'm not sure how I see it, the AFR is consistent with the AFRs we've had in the past. Dr. Sharpe?
So, Mr. President, trustees of the board, I did not, there's nothing that we said about the AFRs of the past or the present, that there was some, you know, special structure to them that meant they belonged in the AFR process or a bond process. We have not distinguished things that way. The most distinction we've done is on that chart on page 13, where when we took everything that everyone talked about, we tried to put it in the right buckets. And this one clearly states that we would give it to the Citizens Bond Committee for possible inclusion in the next scope of the bond program. But what I think is really important about this is, we've done bonds before, as recently as 2008, and then 2004. And Rosedale and Clifton were not anywhere, you know, near the kind of discussion that we've had in the recent years. As, you know, I've talked to Ann and others who've been in special education here for a long time. And while I'm sure the bond committee would have discussed a lot of things, this came out of, if y'all will remember, our early discussions, the board's priority around serving special populations better. And we mostly talk about these things in terms of, you know, closing the achievement gap and all these. But this, these just didn't fall neatly into something, and I think they were constantly overlooked. And because of that, knowing that, you know, this, we have different levels of special education needs, there was, I don't believe for one second, for all the good work of people who are doing things, that doing anything about Rosedale in particular, I mean, maybe Clifton, but Rosedale in particular, was never going to see the light of day. And so, for us, it was spending a lot of time with the principal and the staff and the academic team, saying, what is it that these kinds of kids really need to be able to have a richer academic experience? So, yes, the bulk of these dollars are in the facility. But our effort was about academics as set by this board under special populations. And while we did some things, like increasing dual language, and, you know, I think you know all this, we said, language learners, ESL, we did dual language, and there was all these special population pieces, African-American disciplinary issues. But under special education, this group, I think, has been largely ignored. And I don't believe that a bond process was going to unearth Rosedale. And given how slow we are on the CTE conversation, which is what Clifton really does for our kids, you know, licensure and all kinds of other career and avocational opportunities, we were taking care of the big-picture CTE, but we could do something for Clifton sooner rather than later, because it's not in that really big bucket that is highly facility-oriented. So, you know, I thought, you know, I don't think that without an AFR process, some of these things, whether today or in the future, will surface without the churning that happens outside of facilities. Because, I mean, and I love my facility, but that's not what they're thinking about day in and day out. And so, this actually came, I mean, came from our work in academics and the priorities of this board. And so, you know, next time, you know, we'll just send it over to the bond. But I do think, if there's anything from this AFR process that finally, I think is starting to show some teeth and energy around it, is that this, this whole scenario was born because we have a process, and people were able to bring issues to the table, rather than, here's how we've always done a bond, and people tell me all the time, this is how our process works. But this work that we're doing is all around the sides and underneath and over that, and it doesn't really fit neatly in a bond process. And I'm telling you, they weren't talking about things like multisensory rooms and dealing with the mobility impaired. This was out of a lot of hard work with Ann Jenkins and, yeah, and that lady, Dow, Dr. Dow, and the principal and the teachers there.
Which one?
So, it's not as programmatically heavy, but when we get to costing out what it means to make those things happen, you're going to see on the M&amp;O side that it will have an impact. We just don't know what that is just yet. But it came out of the AFR process. And for that, you know, I think, I think we did something, meaning y'all, y'all, we, the community, did something good for kids who are critically fragile.
So, I'm not saying it shouldn't have come out of the AFR process. I'm just saying at this point, it feels like a bond issue, not an AFR issue. Ms. Torres?
And I just, I think, I think I want to agree with what you're saying, Dr. Sharpe, but I just want to clarify something. The whole reason we, and I strongly suggested that we go away from the old process of the bond, is because under the old bond process, we would be making right now a facility change at Rosedale without regard to the academics that we want to improve. That's why we have this improved process of driving the facilities' changes with academic purposes, as opposed to making facility changes simply because we needed a new hoist. And that's probably what you would have gotten this year, is, well, the old hoist needs to be replaced, or we need to have one of these. But there wouldn't be the thoughtfulness of incorporating the academics to drive the facilities. And so, and I too agree that this certainly is a bond program. And I guess, to help the CBAC folks, we can eliminate one, two, and three, and go with number four. So, hey, we've done some work.
We'll do that, and then follow up with the scenario, I'm sorry, the cost, the delta cost of the other piece too, and look again at what it would mean to actually cost out a facility, a new facility that serves this population.
Ms. Schneider?
Mr. Williams, I completely agree with your statement. I mean, to me, this really does seem like a bond issue. And the point I wanted to come back to was, actually, this my original question had to do with process, which I will still ask you about. But you may remember, I asked about the campus improvement plans when we had our previous discussion. And to me, this is something that the campus should have come forward with in terms of needing to revise facilities to meet academic need. And, you know, that's my expectation for all the campus improvement plans. And, you know, I agree that there are academics involved here, but as Mark pointed out, if this bond doesn't pass, none of this happens. So, you know, I really think that we need to be very careful of what our campus improvement plans are saying, and how they're prioritized, and, you know, focusing on the academic need. The first question I wanted to ask you, though, was a process question. I mean, I agree with your comments that these are facility bond issues. And, you know, when I look at page 13, the stuff on the left seems like it's also related to AFRs, with the exception of the school for a young man. And the point I will come back to there is that I believe the figure that was kicked around last Monday night was on the order of $12 million, if we wanted to do it at one of the facilities, a ALC facility, I believe it was. So, I mean, again, that's bond money that's happening. It's certainly not coming out of, you know, anything that's M&amp;O or, you know, that kind of budget for us. So, you know, again, it's that kind of blurry line, as it was, between facilities and what we need to be doing with academics and bonds. But, you know, I don't have an issue with going with scenario four here, but what's going to be the process if we go through all this? And by the time we've approved all the AFR stuff that we're discussing tonight, and the total is, let's say, you know, $250 million, which is very possible, considering some of the numbers are on this page. And then, the bond folks come back and say, well, not only do we need all the stuff that you talked about, and said, okay, we'll go ahead and take- and said, okay, we'll go ahead and take a look at that. And they come in with another, you know, $500 million or $750 million or whatever the number might be. And suddenly, there's a realization that maybe that package is not really what we want to go out with for whatever reason. I mean, how are we going to go through the calling process to say, well, this needs to stay, this needs to go? What, what's the timeframe going to be for that? Because I, I mean, one of the things I don't want to get locked into is, you know, in the next month or two, we've gone through public process and the bond folks have had their public hearings. We've talked about AFRs and all of a sudden, we're looking at a billion or more in a bond without actually having, sitting down and taking a look at the entire package.
Dr. Christoffin.
Yeah, sure. Just before I answer the question about the calling process and the, and the total cost and how y'all work to narrow that down, you know, I'm just telling you, this administration is following the board-approved Facility Master Plan Framework, which said, lead with academics and then talk about facilities. So at the end of the day, to do the academic stuff that we talked about in the special ed section here was all about academics, which then led to, well, rigging. And then in order to do the multisensory rooms, we're going to have to build out an addition and everything else. So it evolved into having a large bond impact, right? But if we want to address academics, which is where we started, this process is what leads us to that initial conversation. So if it helps the board, so we don't stall you up. Any of these ones with big bond implications, even if they start it with an academic conversation, we can move over to the CBAC. That's not a problem. We've done a lot of work already, we can give it to them, we can narrow it a little bit more, but then let them work it into their scope and figure it out from there. But, but what we have said to the public is that these were going to be processed. This, this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. We were sharing these AFRs, you know, into last school year and into the, the summer for sure. Because we were already having some meetings. So for better or for worse, I just recommend that we don't confuse the public. We stick to our AFR process and we improve the process for the future. So a note for ourselves is, you know, perhaps when it starts, if it's an academic improvement that then starts having big facility or bond legs or something, we move that over into the bond process and let it work through the bond. I would say, much to, in alignment to what Mr. Torres says, I don't think we have a revised bond approach that allows these things to be initiated. They can vet them and everything else, but this is not the place where the ideas on all these things would start without a big community process. So until those two worlds kind of get a lot closer, you know, I, I just want to say that this one really did start off as academics. It just happens to have that bond impact. To the calling process, I mean, this is exactly what, we've gone back and forth, you know, with the CBAC and the administration and this AFR process. We all keep going to each other's meetings so that we're completely informed. But you're right, the bill is adding up. We were already at a billion dollars before we had school information. The CBAC did ask the administration, and it wasn't just my senior cabinet. It was all, you know, department heads in the, you know, central administration that had any information in here that was important. And we came together and worked to try to prioritize in different levels. Just giving, giving the CBAC a sense of, if you have to push on your scope or how much we go for, here's what we know. Pick one, technology, or pick one, athletics or fine arts. We feel like our bases and we could get it this low, but you're not going to be doing this much more improvement or that much more improvement or enhancements. So we've done that once already. And I'll say that that's just not, you know, particularly welcome. You know, people aren't, you know, excited about prioritizing. So I would say, right now, we're still pretty bloated. We've got a lot on the table. The process, as I understand it, but it would be great to know that I'm walking away tonight with a clear understanding, is my understanding that that process of prioritizing happens with the CBAC. And that's where they really are developing that scope of work. If, if, if you're asking about the board doing that, we have scheduled time for you to talk to the CBAC after they do their preliminary scope work. We have other things scheduled, as y'all know, because you're on the calendar committee, into the spring, the winter and the spring. But we were, I mean, but I didn't think that conversation was happening at the board table. So it's really the work of the CBAC, administration's recommendation. In meetings like this, we discuss and we take that back and try to shape it up. But that the real shape of that was happening in CBAC. And is it that y'all are saying you want to do some of that or more of that at the table? And that would help.
I'm not sure I understand what that is in your question.
The calling, I'm calling it Robert's calling. Of, of all the, you know, the project.
Let's change that to prioritization.
Sure, okay.
And speaking for myself, I mean, I'm not expecting to go through on a line-by-line item basis. But I certainly don't want to sit up here and, you know, while I appreciate, understand, like the work that CBAC is doing, I don't want to be handed a billion dollars or whatever the number works out to be and say yes or no. And, you know, to me, it's going to be a very high priority in terms of, you know, not only can the taxpayer do it, but, I mean, is this really the best way to support and rebuild our infrastructure? Because, I mean, I sincerely believe that, you know, a major part of our financial problem is just, you know, we really need to seriously look at the way we're doing our facilities and make sure that we're doing them as efficiently as possible. Whether it's, you know, rebuilding in place, whether it's doing the things that are needed to get them modernized, whether it's boundary changes to put more kids in the right place. I mean, I, I think that that's a major component that we need to be talking about.
So let me try to take a shot because I may have to have others weigh in. I think there's a lot of pieces that just got discussed. I think the Facility Master Planning Framework is an outstanding enhancement to how we plan and identify. And I think there are things that come out of that, some of which are AFRs that will come to the board that are annual. Some of those are going to be other things that evolve to maybe they don't turn out to be an AFR. And I think even the fourth category somewhat reflects that, that it's referred to the bond committee. I think what you're looking for is you're looking for guidance from the board on some of these programmatic things that may say, this is what we think, to help give some guidance and maybe, as the tri-chair said, maybe some eliminate some of the options they're looking at. This one is an example, which happens to fall under a category that said, AFR is determined by achievement test data and facility support needs. And then as the preface, that's probably not exactly the right descriptor for this one. Because it's driven by the needs of a special population of children. We're trying to make sure we're providing it. The facility enhancements would really have programmatic implications for these kids in a, in a way that we haven't been able to meet their needs today. And I think what you're getting, you're trying to get a sense from the board is, do we support what level of facility support for these kids to meet the needs? Is it the first level, which may be the lower cost? Or are we willing to go to the higher level, the $8 million, for example, in Rosedale? And if, and I think you get a sense that the board's willing to spend maybe more money to get to really meet the needs. And I think to the comment that I made, it feels like this one is really a great example of a campus improvement plan that actually worked. That the academic office worked with the principal, it worked with others to figure out what they really need. It might be the model for the way these things are done. But it's also a unique campus and has unique needs. And it feels like they've come up with a set of facility needs that really don't have a whole lot of impact potentially on the M and O in the same way a programmatic would, other than if we build a new facility and it changes dramatically what it costs to operate the facility. I think it sounds like this is one that we could say, give to the facility or the boundary, I'm sorry. The, it's the CBAC. And they would factor it in. And there would be one, there would be some direction from the board that says, we really want to meet the needs of our special population at Rosedale. That to me feels like one that, that got to the right place. It's in the fourth category. It may not require the board to vote on an AFR in December, per se. It's just the direction is given to the CBAC to include it in their work and put it in part of the base package. I think when we get to the next couple, they are broader initiatives that are not necessarily, I mean, they come out of the AFR process maybe because they're the part of the, the planning framework. But they're not in annual the same way that like expanding dual language to a couple more campuses, putting responsive ed in at Lanier Travis, or even dealing with the overcrowding at certain, you know, central, what we're doing with it, an immediate, something happens the next school year. These are big, long-lasting things that have major facility implications that are going to require a bond to happen. And in the future, I don't think you said, you know, give those things to the bond committee. But right now, we have a bond committee, but two years from now, we may not. And I'm not sure you can, there'll be initiatives that happen that you could say, okay, we're going to, we're not going to do anything on this one because we're going to turn it over to the bond committee. There may not be a bond committee. So I think we have to just be smart about how we do this and use judgment to figure out which place they go. And I think you're bringing these back as items that came out of the, the Facility Master Planning Framework process, which included an AFR process. But they've really gone beyond just what historically we've had in the AFRs that we've approved at least in the past. And these just have, like I say, multi-year implications, at least to me. And significant facility implications that are all dependent on a bond passing for it to happen. So that's going, it's just a little bit unique. The ones we did last year weren't dependent on a bond passing for them to be implemented. And I think some of the ones we have on the list this year are not dependent on a bond passing to be done. But these are somewhat hybrid type things. And we just have to use judgment and apply that. So I, I think what I heard the board say is that to take a look at this on the Rosedale-Clifton, to go with the scenario four, which basically is about $120,000 to $10,000 in operating costs, which would maybe be the AFR. And the rest would be something to put into the base facility package driven by academics for purposes of the bond. And have an analysis done that might see if there's an alternative facility could be built that might actually be a better economic opportunity and maybe improved academic environment for those students. But basically turn it over to them to come back with that analysis, but may not require further action on the part of the board. Unless, am I missing something from the board members?
Just so y'all know, we never scheduled this for action for the board in December. All the ones that we were considering for December are in the far left, left columns. The, all the other ones, A and B, all the other ones, we were doing the work to get it all lined up, to answer all these academic questions that our Citizens Bond Advisory Committee asks us to go back and sort out and narrow up. And then it does go over to the bond. So we were never, we were never planning to bring these to the board. The ones that we had are in columns A and B. That would be the most we would bring to y'all in, in December for any potential action.
Okay. Ms. Barstow.
Thank you. I didn't get to say thank you earlier too for the CBAC folks that are still here. Thank you so much for the work you do on a long, oh, long-term basis, short-term basis. And it's very much appreciated. I know it's hard work. The, what the comments just now just kind of raise a question for me and a point of clarification. Where is the nexus? Where do AFRs or forecasting of AFRs beyond this moment in time right now intersect with the work of the CBAC? I don't think I have a clear understanding of that. Or is there some expectation of some intersection there? If not, through a process like what the superintendent is laying out for us right now? I, I understand where you're coming from and I, and I get how we had come to discuss, are coming to discuss the things we are tonight. But I don't think that's very clear for me over the long term. And I think that I understand that a bond captures a place and time where a school district is right then, except for the conversations we were having earlier about technology and maybe some set aside kind of forecasting money. We don't really know where it's going to go, but we know we need it. But if we're going to go through the rigorous process of the AFRs and we have a bond planning, a bond advisory committee in place right now, where is that expected nexus? Do we have a clear picture of that or is that expectation very clear to the, to the advisory committee folks or to the, to the board? I don't think it's clear to me.
The nexus at this point in time or potentially in the future?
Sorry, right now, and I don't know if you want to come back up and, and talk about that, Mr. Hawkins. But right now, what we, we have, and I've given it to y'all before, that, that's not our only advisory committee. You heard about the boundary, you heard about the work group. You know, we have lots of different groups. And we schedule them where they cross each other. We use a lot of the same, not a lot of the same people, but some of the same people in the multiple groups so that there's a carryover. And as, as Mr. Hawkins can tell you, can tell you, he sits on, while he's also leading CBAC with other co-chairs, but there, they, this, he sits on my work group for AFRs. So all of our facility plan, even as we rethink those, in part, I mean, they were at the table when we improved the process piece of the Facility Master Plan Framework about a month ago that y'all approved. So, you know, we do a lot of crossover right now because we literally just schedule it that way. We try to be very deliberate about the crossover of the people, asking them sometimes to serve double duty, but to ensure that they are hearing it firsthand and go back and work. And then what the CBAC does is that these same people that are presenting to us and having us, you know, look at the district and our academic programming as well, you know, they come to us, we give a lot of feedback, they clean it up so that the CBAC can hear it. And we're kind of the big filter to, you know, ask questions and really tidy up things before our CBAC becomes involved. But did you want to add anything about the process?
Not anything really different. I, I think I would say that our, the CBAC has a clear understanding that its focus and responsibility is related to the facility impact, the capital improvement needs that are presented under AFRs. And so I don't think there's confusion around our role or responsibility as a CBAC. I think we've benefited from the, the vetting, the assessment, the further refinement that the AFRs added to some of these items. And yes, they, whether it's just facility matters, they could have come directly to the CBAC. And there are different paths, I guess, to get to the CBAC. But one of the things we know that when it goes through the AFR, that it does fit within the academic strategy, that the consideration about impact on operations, M and O budget, has already been taken into account. We know that, that there is an educational need that's being responded to rather than a facility need that's being addressed. And so I see a benefit from it, from the AFR process because of that. The nexus for the future, and this is, this is something we've had some informal conversations about, but not really with the full CBAC. As you continue that AFR process, you'll find, as, as you've indicated, it won't align with there being a CBAC already formed and looking at bringing forth a proposed bond election. But I think there might be some ways that this CBAC could provide some funding flexibility for the district to draw from as you approve and implement future AFRs. And so there might be a small pot. Technology might be one of the areas. Future AFRs might be one of the areas where there could be a 20, $25 million allotment that could be used to finance those kinds of improvements. Now, that's a consideration. We haven't really vetted it with the full CBAC. But I think there needs to be some, some mechanism for you to address the capital needs for other educational improvements that you will approve in the future.
And trustee Barstow, just to add a little bit more to that. So the F and P framework, part of the process there is AFRs are initiated is identifying a funding source. And for example, last year, some of those AFRs are funded using contingency after a public hearing. And as far as the CBAC goes, you know, they get, they got input from facilities for systemic repairs, from the departments on the departmental needs, from, from planning on demographics and capacity. And so that's part of the process of going in there. So those AFRs in category D that we're talking about now, they actually went and presented to the CBAC. So they got that information firsthand, just like the departmental needs were identified.
Okay. So thank y'all very, thank y'all very much. So it sounds like we at least have some direction on the Clifton and Rosedale scenario to go forward with the $120,000 to $10,000 operational programming for Clifton and move the request combined to the CBAC with the direction to try to make sure we look at the alternative and see if that, for some reason, has any financial viability. If it does, bring it back or just let the board know. Okay. So let's move to fine arts. That was, that was easy. Okay. Okay. So, so fine arts, which, we got the presentation. Dr. Christopher.
So just a couple of guiding questions on this. It was, does the board, what does the board think of the philosophical shift, which is what we've been doing with the Kennedy Center, from the arts-involved to an arts-rich design? We define, explain that further in the agenda, and it was also presented by Dr. Dow. And then another big piece to this, remember, it was a two-part preliminary AFR where the, the programming piece, the M&amp;O impact for this AFR is really in the any-given-child piece. And basically, it's about $202,000 per vertical team to be able to go across the whole district. You know, and all these numbers are still draft, but still, we're at about $200,000, and that would have to be for every vertical team. Part of this design and, is that there's a 10-year implementation strategy that we'd have to see all the way through. And I think by that time, you, you'd have another bond, or you'd be able to think about some other things. But what we want to be clear is that the way they've worked this out takes about a decade to get to. That's one side. The other side is what we're describing as the critical facility needs that have to do with schools that have inadequate space due to large numbers, hello, Murkison, of kids in their fine arts programs, and that's about $31 million. And when we went back, we put a map in your attachments, and can somebody point me to that page number? Thank you. Page 52. Just, you know, I had to do it for myself, but, but maybe y'all will remember. These are the, these are the places you've been in the past in your bond for the fine arts enhancements. And so this is, you know, so we're, these, these that we've named, Ann Richards, Bailey, Bowie, Keeling, and Murkison are specifically schools that we know need similar kinds of relief and from, compared to before. And across all the district auditoriums, we were going to improve the rigging systems. So in that $31 million, that's what that's about. But, but that is not contingent, and the fine arts piece for any given child, they're not contingent on each other. We're just trying to, in the facility part, really step it up on our, finishing our, our planning for bond relief and, and priorities around arts in schools.
So if you could also address this third piece right there.
So this, the, so the last little bullet point, which is not in any scenario, it's, it's a subpoint that we, I wanted to be sure that we were, we, you know, we, we put in our minutes, so whoever's in the future is gonna be here, all of us, whoever's in the future is gonna remember, or somebody's gonna remind them, that we still have other high schools, secondary schools, and 34 elementary schools in particular that still haven't been touched. You can see, not all the schools are hot-mapped. So that last bullet point, which we're not recommending right now, I mean, we're still trying to figure out the first two parts, but it's about a $60 million effort that you still need to have on the horizon for future student growth and for, you know, supporting mostly elementary schools that haven't been touched yet. But again, we're gonna shift all these things after we clean this up as much as possible to the bond folks, and they can talk about that for today or decide to put that, leave that off. But for what we were presenting as the administration for potential scenarios is really getting our arms on any given child and doing the next not-so-baby step of $31 million for those particular schools and our rigging systems.
Okay. So let's open, yep.
The third scenario is just combining the two.
Okay. So thank you very much, and this one definitely has budget implication on an ongoing basis. And if I understand you right, you're saying that the scenario one really is going to be dependent on some funding stream to enable to get to that level, at least full all out. Okay. Ms. Torres.
Let me just be clear on scenario one. That's a, would come out of M&amp;O, it's not a bond-type expenditure, is that right? Or are those bond improvements, capital improvements, excuse me?
No. If you go to page 51, and there's a detailed, somebody, where's that chart? There it is, on page 49, that, the top of the M&amp;O is costing out what's on page 49 in that chart. So it's very programmatically heavy.
Right.
And so there's no capital in that. They just looked at, like she described, Dr. Dow described earlier, those equity and programming, those, those types of things. And then, but we've done, Greg, and they did an, you did an audit of all the schools and, you know, and the needs around that, and some of the things that were baked in here. For the second one was really how we narrowed our focus on facility work, trying to be similar to what we've done in the past to get the next lift on schools.
Right. So to, once again, scenario one really would not require passage of the bond.
Right. But as Mr. Williams described, we would need some new funding stream to be able to support that, but that would not be a bond.
Understand. But I also think that having heard the presentation the other night, I know you had another commitment and weren't able to be there.
I've heard it a few times.
Okay. That part of that initiative involves partnerships and trying to secure other assistance to help, perhaps not capture a significant portion of this, but to capture some folks out in the community that would be very supportive of trying to help us achieve the goal that the any child, any given child initiative is seeking. And so I really would like to support and suggest to my colleagues that we support basically scenario three, but as it relates to the bond program, it's really scenario two. And make that recommendation to the bond committee because I really believe we need to do this, and for some of the schools, we need to do this pretty quick.
Ms. Moya.
I need some clarification on a particular item that we've got listed out here, which is these additions in, I'm on page 51, I'm looking at that spreadsheet, which is additions and renovations to these particular schools. And, and I'm wondering what it is, what's included in this dollar amount, because I, I quickly went through things just now trying to find it, and I couldn't find it. So could somebody please clarify for me what we're talking about for this $29.5 million?
Yeah. Greg, can you come up? Because I know y'all did the most work on the details. We do have that, and I can get that to y'all. So Lawrence or Bill, whoever's taking the notes for our debrief, so, but we have all these, these details things, but hopefully you can do it off the top of your head for highlights.
Yes. So the $29 million impacts secondary schools in which the student demand supersedes the facility capacity. For example, Murkison Middle School is a good example where we have a band hall that was built probably for less than 200 kids, and they're serving over 450 right now. So what we typically did in our, in our recommendations to the bond committee was to take the current band hall facilities at most of the schools and change them into, or recommend that they become maybe an orchestra space. So for example, at Keeling, the orchestra program currently is serving in the choir room, where the choir room has built-in steps, so the choir room lost that space. So they would get their space back. The orchestra would move to the band hall, and then the band hall would get a new facility. So that's how it happened in most of our schools. If you look at Ann Richards, where they ask us for additional fine arts needs, is that that school was built as a middle school, where now they're serving sixth through 12th. They don't have a theater, they don't have a dance space, they don't have a black box. So those addresses are addressed in that, in that portion of the bond. So in most, in most, in all the areas of secondary schools, we took current space, rededicated to fine art spaces that were not previously housed in the schools, and then built new space for, let's say, typically the largest program, which is typically the bands in the middle schools.
So for a campus like the Ann Richards School, they've got 681 kids in that school, sixth through 12th.
Yes, ma'am.
And how, how, I mean, their, their band is less than 50 kids, I think, at least from what I saw at Band Jamboree. And I don't know what their, what their performance, their, their actual true need for theater is, or any of that, or a black box, or anything else. And so I'm, I'm concerned about this because I know that their foundation was wandering around, talking about raising money to build something that is bigger and better than some of our 2,500 student high schools have. So, and so I realize they want something, but do they really need this?
Yes, because, I mean, they don't, they don't particularly need an auditorium that seats 500, but they need an auditorium where they can do performances, UIL, musicals, et cetera. They don't have that space. Currently, the band hall serves both as their band hall and their orchestra, and they're, they're serving some kids from sixth through 12th now, and both programs have significant growth. While the marching band is still small, it has significant growth from last year.
I, I get that. I mean, I, I've seen it, but I just, you know, I, I am not familiar with a single performance that they've had that they've needed to be in a theater. I don't, I, I don't know what they really need, and I don't under, and I don't know what the size of these, 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 you know, I can't even think of a word, what the size of their performing groups really is, and what, and what are we planning? A theater, okay, for how many people? Because I just, you know, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about, about the, the numbers of students in this particular school, and it seems like a very small amount of students, sixth through 12th. And I'm wondering why we would need to build new, and maybe we could convert current, current facilities? I do not know, you know? And we've got all that space in the back, which, which were athletic fields or on the side, which were athletic fields that are not serving that purpose any longer. And I'm just, I'm just not sure what they really need and what, when we, when you say a theater, I don't know for how many people. I don't know why they need a black box. And is it all about equity so that they have the same, the exact same facilities that every other school has?
Well, for example, in their theater department, they are engaged in the UIL One Act play, so they need that type of space. They are building their theater program, they're building their choir, and all, all the groups participate in UIL events. Currently, when they go do events, they have to go to either Austin High School or Bowie to use their auditoriums to perform concerts. So they, they have the need, and it's there. The athletic facilities, the field, is currently being used for their soccer team and for their marching band. Marching band uses it. So not only do they have a marching band and orchestra, orchestra class, they have a color guard now, they have a choir, both the high school and middle school choir, and they have theater in all. And this will be their second year in which the theater department is participating in the UIL One Act. So the need's there. Currently, they're in small classrooms, for example, in the theater, so there is a need there. But I would not recommend, as the fine arts director, a 500-seat auditorium. I would recommend something in the neighborhood of 250, you know? But there is a need for that campus.
Okay. And that's, that's fair, but I'd like to, I'd really like the detail of what we're talking about, not just for Ann Richards, but what is it that, that we need at Bowie?
Okay.
You know? What is it that we need at Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I noticed that on the map, you know, it looked like we were, the color of the dot that was for Bailey and Bowie was a yellow dot, which made it look like they hadn't had anything there through a bond program in a long time, like ever. And I know there's been, I know that, that we did a lot of work at the theater and improved the, the, the stage behind it, you know? At Bowie?
That's not happened since 2004. No, we just expanded Crockett.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, but Bowie has not received.
Since 2004.
Yes, ma'am. They have not.
Really? That's interesting, because I could, I could swear that that happened after my kids graduated, but that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, not to my knowledge, I mean.
Okay. But I just, you know, I just want to see the detail because it doesn't say anything here. It's just a line item, these schools, and $29.5 million.
Yeah, we have a, we have a four-page needs assessment that describes each school and, and their needs.
Well, I really would like to see that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'd like to see that also for athletics.
Athletics is very detailed on that one.
I know, but I want to, I would, I would really like to see what's there so that, because I spent a lot of time at these athletic fields, and, and I, I would really like to see it.
Okay. We'll get that progress. Okay. Okay. Other comments or questions regarding the fine arts? Mr. Snyder.
My question is actually a little bit along the same lines as the, I wanted to see what an example was of what we're talking about in additions. I know, like at Bailey, my understanding is the choir room is in a portable, is an example. The Bowie High School, I'm a little bit familiar with the backstage, but, you know, I, I do have a big concern about, when you go to McCallum or you go to LBJ Lawson now, and you look at their theater, and you compare it to what the Bowie Theater was, now Bowie's theater is probably as old as the school is, but, I mean, Bowie's not an isolated example either. The Reagan Theater is that way, I know, same with Crockett, I would say, based on the last time I was out there. But, you know, I'd like to see, you know, what the improvements are and, you know, how we're doing it equitably across the district. I mean, if it's prioritized where, you know, this is where the greatest need is, got it, agree, okay? But I'd like to see, you know, how you got to that point where, you know, this is what we need to do and why.
Yes, ma'am.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Bradley.
Actually, I'd like to agree with Mr. Snyder and Ms. Moya. I agree 100%. I would like to see the same thing. And then, not only that, when, when we're looking at Keeling, and I heard you say that they lost the choir room and so forth and so on, and I know we have a new principal there, but if we're gonna do renovations, I'm hoping that we're doing renovations that all of the students would be a part of, because I know that all of the students are, are not particularly engaged in the fine arts program at Keeling. So if we're going to look at updating or renovating anything, I hope we are actually looking at how we are engaging children in the program, not just some, but, but all of them.
Other comments or questions on this fine arts item? Okay. I'm gonna say, I think I'm, Ms. Moya.
Just one more comment. I, I don't want anyone in this room or on TV or anywhere to think that my questions have anything to do with me not supporting fine arts, because I do, but, but when, very, very much so. But I, you know, when we're talking about this kind of money and there's no detail, makes me wonder, I just really want to see the detail because I, I'm not comfortable without seeing it. And so, I mean, I have a child who plays violin and is an athletic trainer, so, you know, I mean, I, I've spent all my, all my, my child-raising years doing both. Thank you.
Okay. So I guess I'm gonna start with scenario two. I actually support whatever the right number is to put in, to enhance our fine arts. Thanks to the entire district superintendent and the funders and the mind pop and Brent Hasty for all the work on the any-given-child initiative in the Kennedy Arts Center. Very fortunate to be one of four, five, six districts in the country that had the opportunity to have this partnership to try to find out what the needs were. Now that we've got the information, we ought to seem like we ought to move down the path, and we have, this is our bond opportunity, so if we can take advantage of that and do it. I know that we're gonna have a challenge, because if we say yes to this and yes to this and everything, then all of a sudden, we might end up taking up too much of the total capacity. So I also expect that there may be some give and take about, is there some way that if we can't afford it all, where do, where do we get to? But I do think that whatever the right number is, we ought to do the facility enhancements that we can. And in respect to the operational stuff, that's also maybe a phase in. You know, I know that we're gonna have resource constraints on the M&amp;O side. It may be one component of a TRE when it comes down. I know that there's some effort already in the McCallum vertical team to, to go down this path. I think it's one of those that this may or may not be a great analogy, but it may be like dual language, that we phase in as we can, when we can, rather than try and do it all at once, or it's an all or nothing, that we look at an expansion as we, as it just becomes affordable and makes sense. just becomes affordable and makes sense where the community, you know, where there's the greatest need. And if I recall Brent's discussion, his McCallum vertical team, and then all the elementary schools with 60% or more economically disadvantaged kids at one point, you know, it's like, what's the right pathing for that? But I think we ought to do it, and we ought to figure out how, how to afford it, and then at some point, we may run out of M&amp;O dollars, and then we may have to be part of the component for the TRE in the future. But to, you know, that may be one, and I saw, even looking at the chart, there is some phasing, what's year one, year two, year three. So, I think that's just the way we may have to play it every year, what can we afford, where the resources come from. I think to Mr. Torres' part, the one thing, the beauty about this is really there are partnerships with the community. They're gonna bring a lot of resources to our kids through community partners that we don't have today. That would be a great benefit beyond what we can provide ourselves. So, it's a, it's a great initiative. So, whatever the right number is on the bond, and I think that's where I would look to our CBAC team as well, to help us figure out. And then when they put it all together, we gotta figure out if where we, there may be s, you know, multiple steps to this, but it may be that we're gonna have to, can't do it all, but we'll do what we can, we can. So, this is great. So, thank you all very much on this one. Okay, let's turn to the athletics. Thanks, Greg.
So, athletics is our, is our last AAFR that will be referred to the CBAC. It is mostly overwhelmingly facility improvements. And the scenarios, again, are broken down with a base on page five, and that base carries over into all the, the other, the other designs. So, the first one in the base has the annual operating cost, which we know are still short. So, depends on what you choose, like if you decide on an auditorium, right? We don't have the operating cost for that embedded in here, but that's just an example. And I know that they are talking more about, how do you build up that, that elementary, they've put some operations in there for middle school athletics, but we haven't really been able to, I'm sorry? Yeah, but, but I'm saying, we, we haven't been able to really put a cost on elementary just yet. But it, the starting point is 2.2 million, but the facilities piece is about the practice fields, gymnasiums, replacing artificial turf on the central Burger, Nelson, House Park, that kind of stuff, replacement of HVAC, and safety and ADA. When you get into the next scenario, this is where, you know, things get a little different. And the, the big extra costs in these, Lawrence, y'all still with me, right? Okay, the big extra cost in these are tied to synthetic turf and that lighting, right?
Lighting for the practice.
For the practice fields. And then, when you get into scenario three, we add many things, but at the heart of that one, the big add is an auditorium.
And the wrestling.
Oh, yeah, and the wrestling. So, uh, what's in the details? I'm sorry, we didn't write every single thing. If you go to the.
Page eighty is the detail.
Yeah, if you go to the details, it's in there. But I was just trying to give the big highlights, because, you know, if you, you know, we, we were going, different people have very different ideas about that artificial turf, but they fall in one of two categories. If you put in all the artificial turf and all the practice fields, then it really limits whether or not the community can use them, and, you know, and it, and it does require some sensitive maintenance. But, but everyone seems to agree that the practice fields need lights, and we're a little bit at, do artificial turf on, on all of our centralized fields.
That's in one, two, every.
Right, and one of the practice fields, right?
That is two.
Right, but not everywhere, so that we could still have some that are used by the community freely. But that's really where the cost starts getting, shifts dramatically, and you see, and on this one, we did try to give all the details, so y'all could get a sense of what we're talking about, because, because the numbers were so large. But on the low end, it's $82 million. On the high end, you know, it's $180 million. So, we've, we've vetted this a lot, and they've presented to the CBAC like three times already, so we're still working on this one, but if y'all have thoughts, we welcome them.
Open up the comments or questions, but I forgot one I was gonna ask, and this may be one for Albert, while you're still here, because I don't know if you're gonna stick around. When, when the, the CBAC, when we're talking about these items, is there already, on all three of these, is there already something built in to what the CBAC is looking at? Or is what we're talking about now completely incremental to what you already have? So, all three of these items tonight, so if we said Clifton, is that, is that brand-new incremental money, or did you already have something factored in into the analysis you've been looking at?
We received the same request as well, and the presentation of the materials behind it were both the Rossdale and Clifton schools, as well as the.
So, you have some base level of numbers that are into, to even what you've been looking at and kind of.
Before us now, yes.
Yeah, before you, okay.
The same numbers that you have.
Okay. So, in your total pool, it's in there, so it's not like we're adding something on top of, that's new, you haven't seen. This is, this is already something that's part of your pool of.
It's a billion dollars.
Okay, okay. So, it's just a matter of how, what, what within that billion plus actually gets into the actual bond program? There may be some, you might be getting some direction from the board, for example, on the first one, to put that in, but that may mean something else doesn't get in, because there is gonna be a cap below the billion something at some point. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, let's open up the athletics conversations for questions or comments. Ms. Moya.
Thank you. First of all, I want to applaud the parents, and Tommy, and all of you that worked on this and putting all this list together. This is probably the most comprehensive list of, of athletic facility needs that, that probably, that I've ever seen. And I know that the, that in the, before the 2004 bond, there was a, a committee to do athletics, and, and it, from what I've heard, it was not nearly this comprehensive. So, and, and when you look at this list, it should tell all of us the, the dire straits we are in with our athletic facilities. I, I do have, I want to get down to the bottom line first, which is where we talk about board contingency, bond contingency, funding pending approval. Which bond contingency are we talking about?
2008.
2008? So, so in all three of our scenarios, if we get, if we get bond contingency approval to use fund, those funds for any one of these three scenarios, we, our funding gap is only 2.2 million dollars.
You got, you're on the wrong row, it's zero.
Zero?
That, that row is a zero utilization.
Help me understand, then.
Look, look at that line.
I'm looking.
Look all the way across. What, what are the three numbers? So, basically, they're not utilizing any of the bond contingency. The next row shows how much is being bond funded, and the rest is basically the operating cost at the top.
Okay, so, so these numbers in question mark, in, in parentheses down here, I thought that was saying?
Yeah, that's saying it comes from the bond, that's the, that's the capital cost and the.
The future bond.
So, that's the pending over, a future bond.
A future bond, not, so there's nothing coming out of 2008?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so I misread it. Okay, never mind. So, now, back up here. So, several things that I keyed on was the, the middle school athletic periods, because I've, and, and also, and I know that even at the high school level, people are talking about how they don't see their kids every day for, for athletics, and it's causing a problem, because some schools have their kids every day for athletics, some kids don't. And so, so our, our teams are not, are not developing their competitive edge. So, we need to be consistent across the district, so that we can compete with our, with all the other teams that we play. I don't know what the other schools in the surrounding area, anywhere else does. I don't know if, if they're, see their kids every day or not. I, I just, I don't know. But I do know that some of our, some of our teams are honing their skills a lot better and a lot faster than some of our other schools, and so, there's the equity issue. But I, I mean, I know that there are, there are some schools that are on block, and some that are not, and there's all these things that we have to try to figure out, and how we figure that out, I don't know. I don't think that, I don't think I have to figure that out. I think somebody else gets to figure that out. But I know that that's one of the issues. So, and, and the whole, the whole vertical team thing, or just, you know, the middle school and high schools, you know, working together, and, and the notion of them, of the middle school coaches being accountable to the high school athletic coordinator, just made me want to jump through the sky. I was so excited about it, because, you know, when you look at, at, at one high school districts, that's what they do. And you look at those one high school districts, and some of them are, are state champions every year. And it's not just because they have money coming out their ears, it's because, it's because they have continued, continuous programming that's consistent, even from Little League all the way through. And that's what we haven't ever done here. And Tommy, you remember, when we were, when I, when you and I were at Bowie, we talked about this all the time. So, so I'm, I'm glad to see those things. I'm glad to see the repair and renovation of the training rooms. They are in no way consistent across the district. Walk into Travis, and it looks like they're in a closet, you know, with all old stuff and the, and the vinyl tearing off the tables, and with, with duct tape holding things down. And you go into another school, you know, that, that's got better, but none of them are perfect. At Aitkins, they had a plumbing issue for their, for their ice tub, and, and the, the electrical socket was too close to the water. It was just this weird stuff going on. So, all of, and so I'm glad to see all of that, and it's not just because my daughter is an athletic trainer, you know? But it, it's, but if, I think if she wasn't, I wouldn't be as aware of these things. Thank you, Tommy, for getting my daughter into athletic training. But, but just, I mean, all the kidding aside, I, I am really, really glad to see this and see how thorough it is, because it's true. When our kids go to other, other schools and see what they're playing on, it's horrible. I mean, the difference, just go down here to Basherup to Cedar Creek High School, and, I mean, the difference is night and day. And so, so I'm really, really glad to see this, and I'm, I'm not comparing us to Lake Travis or anything like that, but, you know, I just really think, oh, wait, I wanted to add something. The weight rooms, some of the weight rooms are in, in old shops and other places, and some of them have no air conditioning. And so, I, I didn't see that on here, and I wasn't sure if it was embedded in something, and I just wasn't, just didn't see it. And I noticed where we had drainage improvements for Central Athletics. I don't know if that means Burger or Three. Burger Nelson in-house, but I, I believe there are some drainage issues on some of our local campus, I mean, some of our campuses. I know Travis has some. I think, I think it's either Lanier or McCallum baseball, I can't remember which one it is.
They are embedded in the cost. We just, for that particular one, was a central piece. You know, NOAC also had.
Yeah, NOAC has them.
Right, for irrigation as well. But some of the detail you're talking about, where it may just be a line item, it does include several schools.
Okay.
It's, it's not consistently all middle schools, all high schools.
Right.
But we do have the detail on that.
Okay.
That's the line item 24, irrigation and drainage on all practice fields.
Right, right. I just wasn't, it, I just wasn't sure where things were, you know, so there's, therefore, you're hearing my questions. And then, let's see, the weight rooms, the drainage, oh, the lights, practice field lights. Are we sure that the neighbors around these fields are gonna be happy about lights? I mean, I can just imagine lights over at the Bowie baseball field, and those folks over there, they already get mad about the kids parking in their neighborhood. So, you know, how are they gonna feel about lights at 10 o'clock at night, big old things? I mean, have we, have we done, well, I guess we haven't done any vetting with our communities yet about the lights. I, I'm concerned about it, and I do recall some years ago, and Tommy, you're shaking your head, whenever we would talk about this, we would say, the, the next question was, then, all the Little League programs are gonna want to use those fields, because there's lights. And the men's, the men's programs, and the women's programs, adult programs are gonna want to use those fields, because we've got lights on them. Yes, we'll probably make some money off of it, but is it, is it worthwhile? And how, how much will our facilities get run down with all that use? So, just FYI, you know, Linda, I'm sure y'all talked about these things, you know, but, you know, those are some of the issues that came back up when I was in high school at Bowie for eight years. So, so those are just my thoughts on the list.
You were a parent at Bowie for eight years. You personally went on to high school for eight years.
No, I was at, no.
You were at Travis.
I graduated from Travis, yes, yes.
Once Rebel, always Rebel, but you were not at high school.
Once Rebel, always a Rebel, that is correct. However, you know, I do forget where I am, and I do start hollering, you know, come on, dogs, you know, so I do forget where I am. But my, I do feel like I was in school for, high school for eight years when I was at Bowie. You know, you know what I mean? Yeah, I know, you know what I mean? And, see, you know what I mean? So, but, but I just, I do want to thank y'all for this list. This is fabulous. And, and the, the, the line items that are addressing the coaches, I think that's fabulous, and the, and the stipends that are in, in extra duty days, because that's one of the things I've heard a lot. And keep in mind, my source of information is my daughter at, in a neighboring school district, but she talks about this a lot, because the, the coaches and the trainers are working all summer, and they're not getting paid for any of those days. You know, when they go in for two-a-days and things like that, they don't, they're not getting paid for that. They're just doing it because they know that it needs to get done. And, you know, you've got to get ready for football season. And so, and so there's no accommodation in how we, how we pay our coaches to allow for those extra duty days and our athletic trainers. So, that's all, I'm done now.
Ms. Moya, we can provide detail, just, some of these just say like for all, so like, for example, middle schools, it does say mandatory athletic periods. Well, some middle schools obviously do provide athletics during the day. Some of them are, it is only at the end of the day. And it's just, as you mentioned with high schools, some will double block, where they do see their athletes every day, and some don't. So, it's not to say while we've listed it, listed it that way, it's not to indicate that we do not have a single high school that is double-blocking athletics.
Oh, I know.
So, there are several. It's just, you know, it's particularly with the middle school one. I think that's a little bit more significant, where probably a third of the middle schools are not offering athletics during the school day.
Mm-hmm. But I think that some are double-blocking for certain athletic programs, and not for other athletic programs at the same school.
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Torres.
I'm gonna have some of the questions that I think Ms. Moya had the first time. It's, it's unclear to me which schools are getting which thing, so, you know, I happen to know a couple of high schools whose gymnasiums, at least in my opinion, are way too small, but I don't know that it's clear here that they're included, and I'd want to make sure that they're included, so if I can have some detail on that. Also, when we talk about the practice fields, which practice fields are we talking about?
Lawrence?
I'm sorry? Yeah, yeah. So, if we.
Tommy, come on up.
Yep, that's a general.
It'd be the high school, high school practice field.
The high school practice fields.
But the foul baseball.
It'd be, it'd be one field, and it would be the one we use for football and soccer. You can't, you can't, if you did both, then you.
So, so it wouldn't be the baseball fields?
No, that's not what the proposal is.
Okay, and, so that's the kind of information I just need clarification on.
And we have that. It's just, in this fact sheet, the format didn't allow it, all the details.
Sure.
But we have it, and we, we're starting to make sure you get it.
And, and trustee Torres, they also have a, a detail identifying which gymnasiums they're referring to for the upgrades as well.
Okay, and, and I, and I wish I didn't have this concern, but I have the same concern Ms. Moya has, in that I know at least one of my schools, the community is not gonna let you put in lights. As much as I would like to, and I think they should be there, I'd be willing to go to As much as I would like to, and I think they should be there, I'd be willing to go to bat for it, and, you know.
I mean, you're right.
So.
Trusty Moy is right. We have, we have run into that before, and I made that.
So, I'm not, I'm not sure how we provide equity there, when we know that, you know, it's not going to be able to be done at every school. Do we do it or not? But I think it's something we need to.
It is an issue. There's no denial about that.
I, I do want to applaud, and I, I don't see it on the list here, but I thought I saw it somewhere, to include restrooms at the, at the outdoor facilities. I definitely want to underscore that we need to do that, because I think it's foolish. We've got facilities real close by, but they can't use them because the school is locked. But we, we can't build them on the outside because our specs don't allow us to, or some nonsense like that, and I can't remember what it is.
Are y'all looking at page five on there? I think you could get more detail on page five. Look at, look at.
Your five, page five maybe different than our page five.
Yeah, I was looking at page eighty.
Okay. Look, look at, look at number thirty-one there.
On which page?
On.
Page eighty.
Well, I don't know what page you're.
Page eighty, okay.
Yeah, that's the outdoor restroom. Scenario three.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's, that's addressed there, that, the.
Which one?
Outdoor restrooms, number, item thirty-one on that, on that sheet.
Yeah, okay. Okay. But once again, it's only in, in scenario three, so.
It's in all three scenarios.
It's just in scenario three.
This sheet it shows, the one I have is all three.
It's in scenarios two and three. It's only in two and three on mine.
Yeah, it's just in scenario three. On, on page eighty, we got it. All three is the practice field lights.
And then,
What did you mean? You, you mean, you think we should carry it over all? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think for, for this particular item, it should be on all three of them, yeah, but. Right.
Well, do you need concession stands or just outdoor restroom?
Well, the outdoor restroom primarily, but generally they're put in a concession stand area that can be locked up.
I stand corrected. It is just in three.
That's all right. My eyes are going too, Tommy.
Yeah, you, you're, you're correct on that.
Okay.
So, is the request, excuse me, for clarification is to move it across?
No, just, we're trying to.
This is just one person's input that says that they, they would be interested in potentially seeing outdoor restrooms at the, at the fields. This, this can be some horse trading going on, because you're going to have some practice lights. I mean, it's just something to think about.
And, and, and I want to underscore Mr. Williams and Ms. Moy's, Mr. Williams' particularly eloquent description of the fact that, you know, when our kids play sports, and, and when our parents go to other facilities, and I'm with them, and it's just embarrassing because some of the other facilities are so nice, and they say, why can't we afford this? And, and I agree that, you know, kids, if they're taught to respect the property that they have, will respect property that looks nice. But if it already is rundown, or is not well representative of what their parents have, they ask the question, why don't we have something like that? What is it that's different here? And it's hard to explain why it isn't. But I, but I, but the other thing that I want to emphasize, and at some point, Dr. Krasarfen, we, we had a presentation at the shack from Dr. Andrew Springer on the middle school program that was, that was done. And I really think that people continue to underestimate the value of athletics and physical fitness, and the, the role that it plays in the development of, of our children. Just in a different way, but just as fine arts does, and some of these other extracurricular activities, and I know fine arts is a class, but so is PE. But as they become things that occupy their time outside of their work hours, if they choose not to be a professional musician or professional athlete, which ninety percent of them, ninety-five percent of them probably will not, there are things that can continue to help them in their later lives. And so, we need to instill those characteristics at an early age as possible. And they do, they are the things that keep kids in school and keep them motivated, and give them a way to live till the end of the day, if it's a sport that they're going to, or they're going to participate, or if it's playing a musical instrument. And, and Ms. Moy, I, I have to tell you that it's not just the double blocking. It's the UIL rules that restrict how many hours, once they meet those hours due to double blocking, that they can't see each kid, correct me if I'm wrong. They can't, they can't see them every day after they achieve a certain number of hours.
But they don't have them in their off-season either. I mean, because the, the UIL will not allow, when the season's over, they will not allow workouts outside of the school day, but they will allow it inside the school day. So, that's an issue there. And, and the hours, the, the hour that you have within the school day during the season doesn't count against the, the ten-hour rule. You know, so they lose, basically, if they, if they have the, get the kids two, two days that week, they lose two hours of workout. And in some sports, that's very critical, when you play a team that's had them every day and had, had that, so.
So, so I'm, I'm very supportive of whatever we have to do in this area, because I think we've done a lot in some other areas. I think this is one of the under, undermet needs and underserved areas for the district. I just think we need to make sure that we're, we're, and it's, it sounds like you've done an excellent job getting to that point. And I want to thank all the parents that have worked on this, because they're very dedicated. And some of them, their children may not get to benefit from what we see here. But it shows the dedication and the support. And I, and I do think the support we would have in the neighborhood, in the community, for a, a very comprehensive element of our bond program that was to improve the athletic facilities in the district. So, thank you very much for doing this, and thanks to all the parents that have done this.
Thank you. I would like to chime in on that, because I'm so proud of this group. I've served on a lot of committees in my forty years in education, and this is one of the best, the most unselfish. Their agenda is every child. I mean, they're, they're fabulous, and I'd like to give a round of applause to them. They've supported us all the way through. I'm, I'm overwhelmed by the job they've done for us. And, and they're, they're really excited about passing this. I mean, they, they want as many things on there as we can get, and they're, they're confident they can pass it. And when they brought that up to me, and I just said, well, it's like telling my team that wants to win a state championship, that they can only win five this year. So, I've got, I've got to stay, you know, stay with you. But they're, they're a fabulous bunch, and I'm honored to be a part of it.
And Mr. Torres, and for the public, on page seventy-six, we, we saw the work that Northside ISD did analyzing their students who were in athletics compared to students who were not in athletics. And, and our results were very similar, where, I mean, the last one is graduation, right? I mean, there's a sixteen percentage point difference between kids who are athletes and those who are not that end up graduating. So, at the end of the day, and they also behave better in school. So, we were glad to see the discipline data, the achievement data, and the graduation data that just reinforces the, that part of athletics. And so, just, I just wanted to be sure we took a moment to talk about that natorium, right?
Can I throw in something on that? We, we overestimated that cost there, because that was the only item. And when we reported to CBAC, I, I made that clear. That's the only item that we didn't have vetted, because it came in late. And so, the, some of the research that our task force has done, that figure's more like in a ten or twelve million instead of twenty-six million. So, it, just for clarification there, we've looked at similar facilities, and so it is, it's a lesser amount. That's the only one that we have not vetted through our construction management people. We just didn't have the opportunity. And we made that clear to CBAC as well.
Okay. So, before we get to the natorium, can we make sure, we just go through the rest of it?
And I just found out tonight on that. So, by the way, it's not something I was hiding from you.
So, let, let's go through the rest of it, and then come to the natorium and the issues on, or the items on the scenario three that may not be included. Ms. Schneider.
I've got multiple questions, but I did want to say that, you know, we've talked about lights and concessions and the equity part of it. As an example, the, there was a donation of land to Bowie that we approved some time ago. By the agreement with the city, those items would be prohibited. So, I mean, there's going to be an equity issue somewhere along the line. My understanding is we're looking at annual operating cost of a minimum of two-point-two million. Is that correct? So, it's money that's going to have to come out of fund balance, or?
It's going to be more than that, depending on what you decide. Could be more, could be less, but we're thinking it's going to be more.
Okay. Dr. Krasarfen, do we, I mean, we talked about, a little bit about what the additional costs are going to be for some of the other AFRs. And has this number been totaled up anywhere in terms of what we're going to do?
I'm drafting and collecting and pushing and asking, but for AFRs alone, based on the numbers I have today, the thirteen, fourteen impact of just these, I haven't finished everything, is thirty-five million dollars.
So, we would entirely use up a TRE, at least the money under current code that we would get to keep, just in implementing the AFRs that we have here, plus be obligated to take another ten million dollars or so, maybe a little bit more than that, out of fund balance? Is that a reasonable statement?
Right. And, yep. And, you know, again, depending on what we decide, so if the natorium's in up, whether it's twelve million dollars or twenty-six million dollars, I'll get you a better number. But once that's done, you still got to operate it, you know? So, I know that there were some missing blanks in there. And, and, and again, you haven't talked about career and technical ed and those kinds of things. So, those, some of the ones that just kind of don't quite exist. But, you know, we kept thinking, like, if it's, if it would have an impact on the very next year, what does all this stuff look like? So, somehow, thirty-five million dollars would start, once everything was in place, would start, you know, having its recurring impact. But, you know, without having all the magic figured out and what starts when, it already totaled thirty, and you're right.
Down to an exact number. I mean, that, that's not what I'm looking for. My, my concern is that with the TRE, we get to keep a little bit more than half of the money under current code.
Right.
And the operating cost of these additions, plus what we'd have to take out of fund balance, but yet it completely precludes any other, you know, academic programs that we might want to establish that aren't on the table right now, or that somebody might want to come up with, pay raises for teachers, everything else. I mean, it, it's, it's completely gone.
It's totally gone. And if you went the full nine cents, when we were, you know, looking at the, the AFRs, plus the one-time increase, people have talked about early childhood education. They've also talked about behavioral health supports for social and emotional learning. And there's another thing tucked in there. It was sixty million dollars. And even if we went a full nine cents, that only generates thirty-one-point-seven million. So, I have pulled that together with much, you know, effort, and we're not done yet. But this was part of what I think Mr. Williams was saying very, 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 very early on when we started this agenda discussion. And what I just want to reinforce, even if, you know, this community was willing to pass a bond for more than a billion dollars, right? We don't have enough operational capacity to absorb all this. And so, at some point, you've got to take how much you can absorb operationally and line that up against how much that ask can reasonably be, even if people are as generous as we could possibly imagine them ever being. And some of it, you know, like, I mean, I just look at us trying to, and y'all know better than I, but I know what I've experienced in the last three years around just finishing the two thousand four and eight bonds, right? It takes a lot of capacity, even within the organization. And so, part of what, you know, I think we also have to be realistic about is, what is it that we need to be doing in facilities and operations if we go for larger-sized bond? Because you're going to need people who can make all these things happen as well. I think they're completely over their capacity limits. Just, just, we just don't have enough people doing all this stuff day in and day out. So, I think that's going to be a big reality check for us. And, and then, and I, you know, I went over this, went over this with the COO again today. And it's, it's very sobering. And, and what, you know, what most people were thinking about and talking about was a four-to-five cents increase, which is a range of fourteen million upwards, up to seventeen-point-five, which, you know, comes nowhere near. This barely covers the one-time increase.
Well, I, I mean, I'm very concerned about that. And, I mean, it really gets back to some of the points I was trying to raise earlier, that, I mean, we need to be more efficient in terms of what we're operating. But, you know, for me, the concept of selling a bond of this size, plus a TRE at some point in the future, where we know, again, something over half the money is going to go to the state, not stay in Austin, it seems like a very difficult proposition to try and sell to people to, to encourage them to vote for it. And, you know, I, I agree with, I appreciate the, the point about having May of thirteen not be November. But again, it's still a bite of taxes that people are going to be paying in the coming year. So, I, I would hope that we have some discussion about this in the future after you get firm numbers, but it's a big concern for me. The practice fields are not, not, let me start with the athletic fields first, Berger Nelson. Didn't we replace those in the oh-four bond?
Yes. In oh-four, the, the fields were put in there originally. They have a lifespan, they're warranted for eight years. And expectancy, life expectancy is about ten years. So, beginning in twenty-fifteen, there'll be ten years we would replace. Now, it's not the same expense to build them initially, because you just peel off the rug and re-carpet it, basically, is what it is. So, it's about a, Kurt, you can correct me, you're here, two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand-dollar per field difference is what we paid originally. So, and that's something we anticipated, but we had, we haven't had any money in a bond deal since oh-four in athletics. We, we didn't, we didn't have anything in, in the oh-eight. So, it's been eight years, and, and we have to build in a plan to replace those, or they'll fail. I mean, that's just.
Are, are they in danger of failing now?
No, I, we're in good shape. We test them every, every year. We have tested. They meet all the standards. We haven't lost much. But, and the reason why is we don't practice on them. They're, they're for game, game, and we, we have limited practice. When our, when our bands make the contests, do, we let them use them, and when our teams make the playoffs, we let them use them. So, it's limited there. But it's not an everyday practice.
And Mr. Cox, you said that the cost of replacing would be less than?
Yes, about, the, the, the original cost was about a million per field. These are about seven-fifty, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand per field.
Okay. So, we're looking at roughly two million just to replace the athletic fields, Berger Nelson.
I got your million-six there, Tommy.
So, it's line fifty-four on mine. One million six.
Okay. And when you talked about the practice fields at the individual campuses, are, are we talking about putting in the same kind of fields?
That's, that's in, what, we took that to priority too, but that's one of the things that, that we thought would solve a lot of our problems, especially at about three of our schools. McCallum and Anderson and Lanier have no space. And they're, they're very difficult to maintain a natural turf, maintain a natural turf field when you have that much usage on it. And it becomes unsafe after, after a while. And, and so, we looked at that. And, and there was a, when we presented this to CBAC, one of the concerns about having access to, to other groups. Now, the access would be there, but limited. In other words, if, if they went through the principal and campus coordinator, we could have some use of those fields, but they wouldn't be open to the public continually like our, like our tracks are. So, that, that would, that was one of, you know, how we addressed one of those.
Well, I mean, the, the concern I have is that if, if we're looking at having to replace these fields every eight to ten years, and I'm assuming that if we went to the individual campus level and did the same kind of thing, we would have eleven plus the three main facilities that we've got. So, every eight to ten years, we'd be spending, let's say, a half a million dollars per field, which could add up to a fair amount of money just to replace the fields on, on that kind of basis.
And you probably would get about eight out of those, eight years instead of ten, because you'd have more use than our stadium facilities and campus.
And I'm having a real hard time envisioning how we're going to limit the access to them. I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of, like, the Bowie field as an example. People go to run around the track and do things. I, you know, to say that we're going to limit it, I'm just conceptually having a difficult time with how that would actually be done. I can see with, agree, go into the principal, campus, you know, whoever it is to get permission. But, you know, reality is that that's not the way it works a lot of the time, so.
And that, that was addressed. And that, that was addressed in our CBAC.
Okay, um, another thing, Mr. Cox, you might be able to help me with was, I believe, I think it was the oh-four timeframe, or oh-two, somewhere back in there when we had our last big riff, or not the last big one, but another big riff that we did, that one of the things that we did as part of that riff was remove some of the stipends, athletic stipends and the extra duty periods. Is that your recollection as well, or?
We didn't, we didn't remove any of the stipends, we, we adjusted how we do the stipends, uh, and it, it proved to be good. In other words, there's some schools that didn't have a junior varsity team, for instance, in football, or, or one, and another school didn't have a freshman team. So, we reduced the number of coaches where they didn't have, uh, the full amount of teams. And when we say a full amount, it, it would be a varsity team, a fr- a junior varsity team and a freshman team. And so, we, we changed that, there, the stipends are available at those campuses, but we don't pay a stipend if they don't have a team for them, and that's, that's how we did it, that's how we got there, saved significant amount.
And did the same thing apply to duty days as well, too?
The duty days were adjusted in this last budget cut, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, did someone look at, you know, why we did that in the past and see why we need to change it now? I, I do remember that there were, um, other issues that were associated with the stipends that the board heard about in various ways, um, that was kind of nearly a side reason to, to go ahead and do the kinda things that we were looking at doing with the budget. But, have those issues been revisited?
We, we haven't revisited the stipends since the, the, the budget reduction. That was, you know, for the, actually, we're experiencing it now, so we haven't visited them since then.
Okay, um, finally, I'm still unclear about just the number of kids that we're talking about impacting. I mean, if we're gonna be touching every kid in some way, um, you know, I conceptually agree with it. Uh, but, I mean, if we're talking about the football team and the lacrosse team and the soccer team, I mean, I, I'd like to see the number of kids are actually gonna be benefiting from the changes that we're doing. So, um, if, you know, those numbers could be made available, I'd certainly like to hear them.
Okay, other comments, other comments, questions, Ms. Bradley?
Actually, I just needed some clarification, I'm just having a little time understanding line number six and line number eight. Mandatory middle school athletic period, and then fund more coaches in athletic periods. One high, one middle school, one high school, are we talking about both in eighth, line eight, or?
Yeah, oh, you want me to address that, or you?
Yeah, um, yeah, well, basically, that was, that was a, the discussion earlier, and Tommy, you know this as well, we have, um, for middle school, not every, all of middle school don't offer.
Yeah, understood that.
So, that all, that provides one section, that doesn't provide in middle school, it's one section.
Okay.
And in the high school, it's one FTE.
Okay.
So, that gives the principal the flexibility, so what's written in the text of the AFRs, it gives a flexibility of when to offer classes, and when a coach can actually coach and not be teaching one of the core subjects or another subject.
Okay, and what about those schools that are double-blocking? Where, where kids are double-blocked out of, uh, athletics, choir, fine arts and whatever? So, so, was that ever discussed, that how we could ensure that we are engaging more kids?
It is, because I do think that that's one of the reasons, when a school does double-block a language arts and a math, it may take a student away from taking one of the classes, or one of the athletic periods, especially if it's a smaller school. That's something that I've been talking to Tommy about, and we, also in the planning team, we look at, is to see how that actually's gonna impact the student. So, I do think by adding another section in middle school, that gives, and I did talk to, I called a couple of principals to ask about that, how that would play, that would give them flexibility to provide another or an athletic period during the day, so that students can take, uh, that opportunity, since right now they are taking physical education still, if they just don't take athletics.
Uh, line fifty-two and fifty-six.
Mm-hmm. What, the naderatorium? At fifty-six?
The, yeah, the fif- uh, I'll start with fifty-six. The fifty-six represents a possible partnership with the city of Austin, the YMCA's, Austin YMCA's, and possibly the University of Texas, to build a swim facility. It's an outdoor facility, it's centrally, we, the, the place central we're looking at is there on, uh, say, sort of Chavez, uh, at the corner of Chavez and, and, uh, South First. I mean Lamar, excuse me, Lamar and Chavez, there, there's a YMCA at that point now, and there's a, there's a softball facility that the city owns right there. That, that was the one that was addressed. We, we've been in discussion with them, it's, uh, we're still waiting around to try to get, uh, get in, get an audience, uh, with the mayor and some of the, the city council. But, uh, it's on the table, they have plans for it, uh, the, the plans have been reduced somewhat, but that's, that's one of the things that, that, uh, that the eight million would be. Not necessarily that, that was one in particular we, we vetted, and, and, uh, it could be another facility as well with the city. They've always been interested on, in their pools of, uh, working with us. We hadn't had a lot of luck, because they're having budget problems as well, and they've closed a lot of the city pools that we worked with them to heat, and so, that's, uh, caused us to have to rent other facilities for our swimmers, you know.
Okay, so, we would be talking about a, I'm sorry, somebody said something?
I, I wanted you to mention the swim lessons that are already currently happening with the YMCA, and working with about eight schools, bringing first graders and students to the university.
Yes, I, I'll do better, and thanks for reminding me of that, Huddy. Uh, the, the YMCA, in a, in a situation like this, the beauty of this is we wouldn't have any operation costs that we would if we owned an, an naderatorium, that the YMCA would, would operate the facility. We would be in there when we needed it, and along with the YMCA's, YMCA operating the facilities, they would provide the swim lessons and the teaching of our first, first, second, and third graders across the city that would, would help us with our children that don't get a chance to learn to swim. And, of course, uh, we think is a big item for our elementary kids as well. So, uh, the other way it would work, if we were in a naderatorium situation or a swim center that we owned, it would have to be rented out and, and, uh, you know, expenses defrayed by rentals and, and allowing other people to operate, uh, programs there as well, so. And again, that figure for the, uh, the, the swim center or the one, what was it, fifty-two, is more like ten or twelve million, and we're getting closer to the figure. We just, I just found out tonight that that number.
Before I give up my slide, do y'all getting ready to piggyback on the naderatorium deal or go somewhere else? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the district has already built one, unfortunately, it's located down in South Texas.
Well, now that, but, since you said that, no, 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 I'm, I'm glad you said that, because one of the-
Appreciate recap, that was a funny, okay.
I'm glad you said that, because one of the things that have always been a thorn in my side is that our, uh, 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 recapture, re- yeah, recapture. If you, uh, Brownsville has a naderatorium, there are several schools that have naderatoriums on our dollars. And it has always, it has always been a thorn in my side, because I know that our children are waking up early in the morning to use facilities, and, and all of them are having to share the few facilities that are around Au- Austin. And then, not only that, I remember one year, we funded the little heating elements for the pool so that the kids, you know, would, when they have to, uh, swim and it was cold, we were funding the heating elements for those pools. So, it has always been a thorn in my side, that, that we have had to do that, and our children have gone without, uh, something like a, a, a facility, our own facility, while we have funded other facilities across the state. So, I'm not saying that I'm against this by no stretch of the imagination, I just wanted to be clear. Uh, and I think we need to, when we are talking about that, we need to bring up these things so that our community know that this is just not something, it's not a wish list, but this is what our children are experiencing, and we have built naderatoriums across the state with our dollars. So, I think that that definitely need to be said, but if someone else is gonna piggyback on that, 'cause the other thing I wanted to ask about is with, with middle school facilities. We know some of our middle school tracks are not four hundred meters, they're two hundred, and, and some of them are not even oval, they're in a circle. So, our kids are running in a circle just trying to get to the finish line. Uh, I'm serious, it's a donut, they're running in a, running in a donut. So, it's not really something, it's not even a competitive track, in my opinion. And I, that has always been a thorn in my side, too, but I know we left it up to principals as to, uh, whether they wanted a full-size track or a two-hundred-meter track. And I'm not even sure if the donuts are even two-hundred meters.
Yeah, the, the problem with that, trustee Bradley, was when they put those in, some of the, the footprints wouldn't, wouldn't accept that, a, a, a regulation track, there wasn't enough room. So, they're, they're just smaller, they're smaller campuses like Fullmore, uh, and it's Ann Richards now, Porter at that time, Porter Middle School. But, some of the middle schools just didn't have the space to support a four, full four-hundred-meter track, so they had to, they had to adapt to the space that was available. That's, it was an engineering situation, and they had to work through the city, uh, to get permits to put them on there. The city wouldn't allow, uh, full-size tracks as well in some of those places. So, that's, that's why they're that way, it wasn't, it wasn't the principal's deal, it was, it was our, it was the intention, of course, I was coaching them, but I know what it was like, but it, it was the intention of having four-hundred-meter tracks on every middle school and high school, it just, uh, we, we have some small, if you've ever been to Fullmore and looked at, they have a thirty-yard field to support every outdoor activity, including physical education. Keeling is, uh, is the next one, I mean, in-
Well, I was under the impression, 'cause I, I remember when Keeling received the donut, and I think my daughter was there when they had the donut, but I was under the impression at that time, at least what I was told, it was the principal's decision to have a two-hundred, that there was a choice between the two-hundred and the four-hundred, and that principal actually took the two-hundred. But, I do know some of them, uh, Keeling, I guess, I'm not sure about Fullmore, but I know Keeling has city land as well as school district, but, um, I, what I didn't hear is, well, we're going to repair tracks, so we're looking at, I don't see a whole lot, as we're looking at middle schools, that we're going to repair, repair tracks, so we're looking at the sand pits, so what are we planning on doing with that?
Service center is, is, is working with, uh, contractors to get that done, it's just as, you know, the money, the way it was. It's, it's not through our department, but we're, what we do is go by and, and assess the, the damage or the, the repair that needs to be done at each school, and prioritize it, and then, you know, which one, the ones that's got the worst situation and the most unsafe for the students are the ones they go to first, and, and there's still a, uh, an initiative to get all of them repaired, they just hadn't done it yet, it's, lack of funds, I guess.
Okay, so, so, did we look at that as, as we were, you know, this is for the bond or whatever? Did we look at that for middle schools?
Yeah, the tracks were just, that, that we had in there were just for the central facilities. It, 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 uh, it didn't address the tracks on the, on the campuses, because they're, they're already there, it was just, it's something that's gonna be an M and O to replace, you know, or repair the structures.
So, Tommy, I think what you made me ask is that, did you get tracks repaired, resurfaced in the central facility? Take a look at, maybe is that possible, something to put into the middle school and high school repair resurface?
And we can get those numbers, it's, it's been an ongoing-
It's probably, it's probably not huge, but it's definitely an ongoing issue. You got chunks of some of those tracks, and they're just... Okay, Mr. Guzman, uh, Ms. Bradley, I don't wanna cut you off, I'm sorry, is that?
No, I was, I was just gonna say, uh, middle school athletics lead to high school athletics, and we are expecting our kids to be competitive, then we need to look at all levels. So, if we looked at high school, we need to look at middle school, and we need to look at all aspects of middle school. We just can't pick and choose football or softball, or that's baseball or whatever, basketball. We have to look at all aspects of what they're playing. So, uh, if we did not do it, I'm gonna ask the committee if they would.
And, and the way we, we went about that, it, the, the needs were assessed, we sent teams by to, to look at the facilities. We then sent those recommendations to the coordinators and principals on the campus. They, in turn, sent that back to us, and the recommendations are based on those, uh, the principals and the coordinators and, and the team that we sent to address it. So, that's where, that's where the, that information came from.
Mr. Guzman?
I was just curious, at Fullmore, uh, the field is what you said?
It's about thirty yards, that's it.
Thirty yards?
There's no, there's simply no real estate, it's, it's either buildings or a parking lot, and then that's it, a tennis court.
When my grandson, the plays there, tells me, I ran it from, from goal to goal.
In three, in three seconds, yeah.
Couldn't be that impressed.
Yeah, and that track is a two-hundred meter at most, if that, if that, yeah.
Yeah.
Would have to buy another street, you know, the, the expansion there, they bought that whole block of Johanna Street, if y'all are, I don't know if anybody's in there old enough to remember that.
There's a, like, a tennis facility.
Yeah.
Even with that, even expanding it there, you-
Even if you took the facility, the tennis facility away, you'd probably gain about thirty, forty more yards. It still wouldn't be a regulation field.
I was just, I, I wasn't thinking of taking it away, I was just saying, if you've incorporated, you know, into that, it wouldn't give you that much more, okay?
Yeah, there's just, there's no, no real estate.
Be a little more impressed with your grandson.
Yeah, a little bit, ten yards.
We could buy the, we bought the block of Johanna and increased it, we could buy Leland, isn't that Leland Street on the other side?
Ms. Moya?
Tommy, when you were talking about, uh, some, um, partnerships with the city, and you mentioned, uh, how they'd close some of the pools, I got to thinking about some of the parks that really aren't used that much, like Gillis, for example. There's just not a whole lot going on over there. Um, and I wonder if when, in your conversations with the city, if you all have talked about, uh, maybe some type of an exchange or, or some kind of a joint use where we could take over one of those, those parks and use it for, you know, I mean, put in a, a regulation-sized pool and something else, or whatever.
Yeah, at an existing facility, that, that came up in our task force, and that's a possibility with the eight million that we've got in there, one of the other possibilities would be doing that. And it was brought up by one of our people in the swim community that's been around a long time, Mr. Watson. But, so, it, it's something that still could be on the table, or that's, that's been addressed.
I'm glad to know that.
Because there's no certainty that that other one will, will, you know, that we can, it'll consummate, it won't.
What about, uh, the, the softball fields down at, at Butler? Where are we on being able to use those?
Right, right now, they're in violation of the inter-local agreement that we have with them. We, we put bond money in oh-four in there, so they furnished us an equal, is the terms of the contract, and we're at the Montopoulos Field, it's a Roiguerro Park, I think is name now, we call it Montopoulos. But, their, their adequate facilities are just not in the right place. We need to get back at Butler, and that's our plan eventually, when they finish, they've just about finished the construction on Zach Scott Theater, and, and it's our plans to get back in there, 'cause the location is not as good at Gurero, because, uh, we've got schools in southwest Austin having to fight their way across there, and then, we have the NOAC facilities that are great facilities for our north, for kids north of the river, but we're, we're hurting there. We use Garrison Park as well, uh, for Crockett and Travis to use that facility.
So, are the, are the Butler Fields finished as far as the construction? Because at one pure, at one point, it still really wasn't finished.
Yeah, I don't know where they're on it, I mean, we're, I was under the impression that we can get back in there, not this, uh, not this spring, but next spring.
Okay.
That's, that's kinda what they're saying, but I don't know how, how good we are on that promise.
Okay, thanks, I was just curious.
Just one quick thing, and this sort of is for the bond tri chairs as well as, uh, Mr. Cox. Um, and that's exploring the possibility of having money to buy land for some of these areas, you know, should it come up? Should an opportunity arise, you know, is there a way for us to have a certain amount of money in the bond program to, to do that? And it, it may not get, you know, if we can't find the land, then we wouldn't buy anything, but at least if we found the land, we'd have some money to be able to do that. If there's a way we could do that, I think it would be worth, uh, exploring that.
Great, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, 'cause there's a great piece of property there by McCallum High School on the corner of Keney Lane, there, that Honda, it's, and maybe we could even talk the little bowling alley into selling. If we'd have a great facility there, that, that would be great, uh, 'cause McCallum has no space anymore since we built the Fine Arts Center, and, you know, there's just no space there.
And Andrews has a similar problem, but without money, I mean, if we don't plan for these things to have some money, it would be... So, I, so I think if we could, if we could do this, and who knows, maybe we could buy the nursing home near Fullmore.
Yeah, kinda have a land bank kinda thing.
That, that's what ACC, we talked about earlier, so I think it's something to think about? Is, is there a capacity for some, money for land acquisitions in the future?
'Cause that's the only way they're gonna get expansion, there's nothing left. There's nothing left. It's, she's only got concrete or pavement or building on it.
Other comments, questions on athletics, Mr. Schneider?
I just wanted to say one thing about the joint use stuff. I mean, agree with it, great idea. But the current interpretation is that we actually need to modify the city charter to allow the joint agreements. And I know Mr. Waxler isn't here anymore, but there is a charter amendment that is on the ballot that will actually enable this to the city attorney's satisfaction. So if you believe that's a good thing, you need to go vote.
Educate yourself and vote. Okay, other comments or questions on athletics? Okay, let me throw just a couple at you. There was actually more than a couple, some data points, you know, the graduation rate you talked about, that same thing applies to arts. It's, you know, people participate in arts, kids that participate in something come to school because they've got some cool stuff to do, and they graduate. You know, the challenge of bond dollars versus the TRE is the one thing that's compelling to the public, is that we get to keep all the dollars we raise with bond dollars. The impact of 3 cents is much greater. And so I think it's something that we ought to, this is why it seems like it's a good time to do it, because the benefit that our taxpayers get and our school gets for the bond dollars and for the tax impact is enormous. With respect to your, the operating cost, the facility cost for this one, it feels similar to the fine arts situation, which is, but I think it's going to be helpful to know, for all of the facility things that we've got, maybe that's scenario one, two, and three, is there associated operating costs? Or are they facility enhancements that don't by themselves impact operating cost? Because when I look at the operating cost above, it feels like the fine arts thing, these are ongoing costs that are programmatic, that are really dealing with something else. We could do the facility side and then phase in the operating cost side as dollars are available and sort of a similar type thing. What can we do, what's available? That feels like it's very incremental, based on resources available. I'm going to look forward to seeing what makes up $35 million, because that never felt really high relative to, I'm not saying doubt, and it's just for the $35 million operating cost. But I think we need to understand what's the one-time cost, and is there an ongoing operating cost associated with that? I think a lot of these, there's not. With respect to turf, if y'all could look at what the implications would be for the middle schools, or the high schools, rather, for impervious cover? Because I think some of these are going to be over the aquifer, and even if we want to do it, sort of like the lights, people may not agree with it on the lights, because it's the neighborhood. I'm not sure that in some of these, we could even get the impervious cover.
City may not agree.
May not agree to it. So just need to understand that before we put it in there, what that's going to be. With respect to the...
They consider turf impervious cover, they do. I don't know why, but they do.
Yeah, so with respect to your items, what is the new competition gym that's...
That's at Anderson High School, that's one gym. They have the, they have a gym facility that wasn't even suited for a 4A school. We have middle schools with a better facility. And it's just, we'd looked at expanding it, Kurt sent engineers out, and we visited the campus two or three times and looked at expansion. But the way the structure is, it wouldn't allow expansion, so it would have to be replaced.
So what would you do with the old gym?
It'd have to be demolished.
So, do they have a boys' and a girls' gym there today?
There's, that gym, and then there's a smaller one, yes, there is. But it's not a competition gym.
Because, you know, we think about having, because I think there's going to be a sense on some of these things, is we already got one of those, do we have to get another one? Not that we don't, I don't disagree that we could use it, but it's one thing when something's too small, and we need to, and we got to get it bigger, versus we don't have one at all. Those, I think, are a little bit easier sells, or we got them dramatically fixed, versus, well, okay, it's a little small, but it's not great, but is it worth 10 million bucks? So, now, I didn't realize what that was, okay, now I see. Your systematic repairs on the central facilities, is that what, just, you don't have to get it down, but just sort of what makes up 13 million bucks?
Yeah, and it's, and that's the, of all the things we have, that one is the most accurate, because it was, engineers listed, about 12 million of it is at Burger Center. We're, our HVAC system, chill water lines, you know, they're daily repairing the chillers, the chill water lines are breaking, continually rusted out. So it's replacement of the, and it's only to do with the gym, gymnasium facility, not the baseball and football fields.
Okay, so in the central facilities, are you fixing all the bathrooms for our guests? You know, we did some work, is that part of...
That's part of the system, yes, it is.
Okay, that's what I was, I know that maybe there's one stuff internal, but people that go to our facilities go to the bathrooms, and sometimes they're...
Well, we had one backup, we got a situation at Burger with the settling that it's caused one of the sanitary lines to sag or belly, as they call it, and it's...
We've got to fix those bathrooms, they're not sanitary. Actually, I think the idea of the partnership swim facility makes a lot of sense, if we can do this partnership kind of arrangement. We can talk more about the auditorium, but I think that's one that makes sense. The on-campus laundry rooms, do we not have them today? And are they sending out their stuff?
We have, we have three currently, and the other, the other...
Campus just don't have it?
They don't have them. We're trying to get a few of them in, just kind of on a Band-Aid basis right now. But they send, Clifton Center has a program that launders all of our towels and all of our uniforms. But the problem is they can't get the uniforms back to them on a, you know, on a timely basis. It's easier to do with the towels, because they have, you know, a huge inventory, and they can have clean towels every day. But getting their equipment washed and back, and kids end up wearing it for two or three practices, and that's a sanitary issue with a lot of the MRSA bacteria that we have. And we've had some severe staff infections at some of them. So that's, that's what that is. And I think even the three that have them, we're probably going to have to put a little money in those to get them up to snuff.
So, well, the two items that, to me, were in scenario two, that looked like they felt like they could have been scenario one items, misunderstanding was item line 27 and line 28, the expansion of the training rooms and the expansion of the laundry rooms. I mean, I don't want to take work away from Clifton, but there's, if there's something that we can do to improve the quality and health and sanitariness and the turnaround, those may be two items that, at least from my perspective, I know there's a big cost thing, but at least go into the pool of scenario ones, which goes back to the broader question of, how did you all make the split between scenario one, two, and three?
I'm going to allude to, Paul, we just had a lengthy meeting on trying to come to an agreement. It's kind of like a wishbone that you were talking about earlier. You know, you got one, you're tugging on one to say, what will the, what will the community pay for, and the other, what do the kids need? And so you're pulling on each end, wishing that we come up with the best one. So we're not sure, you know, we're not sure where we are on it, but that's a result of submitting it, our request to the CBAC and meeting with the cabinet.
Okay, because I guess when I look at, if the practice field lights are not potentially likely because of neighborhood objections and all that kind of stuff, then that three before may come out, and potentially maybe a couple of other items come in. But I understand that this is a wish list, and it may not be able to get to everything. And we're going to put something in the pool, and then it's going to go to the CBAC, and then there may have to be filtering on that top. As we talked about before, I think this is where also the bond program and how it's packaged will make sense. You know, what's the athletics package versus what's the arts package versus what's the facility and the growth? 2004, we had six different propositions, as I recall. So there is some element of letting the voters decide. You know, we may feel like it's a little bit too much or not, or we feel like it's the right, what we really need, and the voters can tell us if they agree or disagree. And so I think we need to give them that opportunity and, you know, not go too far, but also try to make sure that we're not shorting ourselves for another decade, particularly as it comes to athletics and arts. So I think, I mean, you have to respond, but just, I think that's more guidance for Albert and your team and others, just kind of how do we put it together? What's the overall need? And how does it balance with everything else? And there'll be a lot of other input over the next four months about what we think the taxpayers are willing to support.
I did promise our committee, our task force, that I would bring this forward to you, because we discussed it a little bit with the chief officers. But our committee is confident they can get the votes for it, and they would like to see priority two and priority three like a standalone item, to see if they, if they pass, they pass, and if they don't, they don't defeat priority one. So we did this in '04, and that's why they did, they had five proposals there. And so they would think about the other two priorities, and that's, I'm just throwing that out.
I think at this point, that'll come back to us later. I think it goes to the CBAC, who will kind of think about how to package it, and what's the right way to go, and what do we want to, you know, what, sometimes it's a lot of strategy, but what's the right absolute have to have versus what are those things that may be a little bit more on the wishlist side of things? Be great if you can get it, kids really need it, but public may not support it. And so there's a lot of work between now and then. So thanks for bringing that up. And appreciate all the work that you guys have done to put this together and working with the task force that you have doing that. Again, thanks, thanks to them, because it's a lot of passion, a lot of work.
A lot of work.
And a lot more left to be done. And if we ultimately get the bond program, then we got to get passed, so that's a huge deal. Any other questions or comments on this item, folks? Okay, so this is great, thank you guys very much. Okay, board, we've got two other items on here, and it's 20 minutes to midnight, and we might have to either move very quickly. So Doc, why don't we, the one I think that is probably most time-sensitive is going to be the improvement plans. So why don't we just quickly see if we can tackle that before midnight?
Yes, you've seen these before, and these are required by the state. They are for Burnett, Lamar, Pierce, Garcia, Mendez, Bedecheck, LBJ, Eastside Memorial. And you're scheduled for action on these on October 22nd, because we have, we are required by law to submit these to the TEA by October 31st. Every school that was AU or recently AU must, one year out, must submit a plan. And all improvement plans that are presented are also in your next agenda, there's a public hearing associated with them. We've vetted these extensively, I've sent y'all updates along the way regarding the CIT, that the Texas Administrative Code requires that we have a campus intervention team that's assigned to each school for the development of the plans. And so they gave us new requirements and things of that sort, and we've been working with them to clean that up. While our schools and their regular plans have many other details and everything, but this is the state-required format. So there would be things that, I don't know, you might think belongs there, but if it doesn't really fit in their format, it doesn't help us to turn it in. But we feel like these have been well-vetted with the state-approved CITs, and we're prepared to bring them for action at the next regular board meeting.
Okay, let's open up for comments or questions on the improvement plans, and again, looking for action on the 22nd, two weeks from tonight. Ms. Torres?
I just have a question, and I think we talked a little bit about the fact that we're sort of in this limbo phase. How does that affect these plans?
If they were AU in 2010, or AU in 2011, you have to do the plan.
Okay.
And if in 2010, I mean, if you were, if you're only one year out of AU, even if you may academically acceptable, you still have to do a plan. So we had to carry over the labels, and so that's the same schools as before.
Okay, other questions or comments? Ms. Barstow?
One-year plans, it's a one-year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
How does this, how are, like, let's say the AFR for Pierce and Garcia, am I right about that? Let's say they became single-gender schools. How, would that change anything here?
Not, I mean, there would be different strategies for the next school year.
Right.
Right? So they might, you know, change some things, but at the heart of it, I mean, they're not hung up on what, you know, what our approach is.
Yeah.
They just, for improvement plans, they want you to do things around, you know, demonstrating that you're working on leadership effectiveness, or what are you doing to analyze your data? What specifically is being done about climate? So it's not as much about what kind of program you might be implementing. Some of the program designs would be able to add some flavor and details to the specific initiatives or any redesign, but not for this school year.
Okay, got it.
Ms. Schneider?
Dr. Sharf, along those lines, if the single-gender schools were implemented at Pierce and Garcia, would the PMS numbers change?
No, we would not change the PMS numbers.
So even though you've got a, at least in my perception, a radical redesign from the current school model to a new school model, would be keeping the same PMS numbers, and therefore they would still be subject to the same...
Right, you know, we kind of went a little bit through this when we dealt with the Pierce closing and reopening, and that was a closure, and they wouldn't let us change, you know, we didn't change the PMS numbers. You just, all they do is they change the, you know, the label, but even though, I mean, Eastside Memorial is a perfect example, you know, we changed, we brought the two schools back together and all that, but we had to carry, we had to carry one of the labels, it just, it's just the way they work, and I just doubt they're going to change that.
And I'm not suggesting, you know, changing the PMS numbers is going to change anything at the school, than just the accountability issue. The CIT teams, how long have CIT teams have been assigned to these campuses?
Paul, I'm sorry, Lori, I just need to make sure Paul hears it. So the CIT teams that we have now, these are the newer ones, right? We had to rebuild them based on the new guidance?
That's correct. TA changes their practice, plus we select CIT members every year.
Right, okay.
And we have changes in internal staff, we also change the CIT membership.
So there may have been some changes, I wouldn't know which ones specifically.
We pretty much, we changed the Eastside, and we changed the middle school's external CIT.
Okay, if you could let me know how long the CIT teams have been on the campus and what changes have actually been suggested and implemented? I'd be particularly interested in if the external CIT portion of it has changed over the time period that the CIT team has been on campus. Okay? Thank you. You know, for me, the thing I'm just looking for is, you know, these schools have been ranked as low-performing by the state for multiple years, and I'm interested in what we're doing that's going to take us out of that cycle more than anything else. So is there some, here's what we're going to change to do things in a different way that's going to help things out, other than, I mean, what's provided in the documentation on the agenda item?
What's in the documentation in this agenda item is what we're doing for this school year. Anything else that you want to do to significantly change the programming of those schools would need to be for next school year and in those plans. But pretty much, you know, we're using best practice work, you can see through some of these things. Some of them are adjusting the way they do their data application, working with limited English proficient kids, depending on the demographics, each one's a little different. But, you know, teacher quality, school climate, and a couple of other categories. But what's in here is what we're doing for this year. This is what, in large part, you know, when we finished out the school year, and I get that CIT teams, you know, were, they were still working things out at the state for people to come in after the school year started. But we do not rest on our improvement plans working with schools based on the budgets that, you know, we are, y'all had already approved for the next school year. So, and y'all had not approved any big changes to these schools, and so what we have here is what we have.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments regarding these plans? Just a follow-up from Mr. Schneider's comment about the change in PMS numbers. To me, this feels a little bit different than Pierce, where we tried to reopen it. And so I don't know if it's viable, if we might get the clock reset in some way by changing the PMS numbers, maybe if you guys have looked at it and decided it's not. But I don't know if it's worth an inquiry to just say, can we do it? Because it seems like it'd be, if these are going, if for some reason you go down that path, you know, then it seems like it'd be nice to get a fresh start for those two schools, if possible.
I'm happy to ask, but even, I mean...
Yeah, I'm not saying it's going to be likely, but it's going to be very different. It's not like the same kids, it's going to be half, 50% of the kids are going to be new kids, if we get there. Okay, so, everybody okay? This one's Mr. Guzman.
Were there any significant changes in the improvement plan and from the reconstitution plan? I know they're different, but a lot of that carried over.
Yeah, a lot of that comes over only for the appropriate year, right?
Okay, that's all.
Okay. And I think, thank you very much. We got to... And I think, thank you very much. We get this, this item, oh, Ms. Bradley, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the Pierce Improvement Plan and attendance, the area of attendance.
Can you give me a page number, Ms. Bradley?
Uh, page thirteen, two of three. And actually, I'm wrong, I meant to start at Garcia, which is page eleven, two of two. This is ninety-five percent of all students will meet statewide district attendance policy. What is their attendance? What was their attendance, or what is their attendance?
I don't, I don't know their attendance off the top of my head, but I know they got the attendance award at my last, at the end of the school year for the, for most improvement, and I, and y'all were there with me at the last expanded cabinet. I think Pierce won again. I know it's up. It's improved and it's up, but I can't tell you the number, but I think they've, I do it every month, and it was back-to-back.
Okay, and, and we have the parent support specialist basically focusing on TTA. Are we having the parent support specialist work with parents with attendance or visit, home visits, or?
I don't, I don't know the details of that, but I can find out by the next time.
Okay. And I guess would be the same with Pierce. I don't particularly see where there's a, where it says there's an attendance issue here. Or, or attendance is focused on in the Pierce plan. Have we made the transition yet? So are we waiting to make that transition at Pierce?
I'm sorry, which transition?
Leadership?
Uh, yes, that has happened, so we have the interim principal there.
Okay, and how are we working with her on this plan?
She worked, well, you know, we knew that that transition was gonna happen.
Why?
The day she started.
She's a good person.
Right, so we had a plan, and that's part of the reason why we had that assistant principal work very closely with Texana. Recognizing that after the school year started and they got the first six weeks under their belt, that she would carry on. I met with her personally, she's absolutely aware and was engaged in developing this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay, Dr. Starfam, so we'll look forward to this on the twenty-second with, and if you, maybe in the BWU this next week, whenever it is, prior to the twenty-second, give the answers to some of the questions that were raised. Okay, we've got eleven minutes before midnight. There's an agenda item for the budget calendar. Nicole stayed long because she wants to at least be here to answer any questions. We missed her desperately while she's been patiently waiting. Should we try to knock this out so we don't, or at least see if there's any initial questions about it?
Sure, and Mr. President, I apologize, I am not feeling well, and so I'm happy to introduce this, but I am gonna have to excuse myself for the rest of the evening.
Okay.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, in the coming months, the administration will provide budget updates and actions for the board to consider as we develop the budget for the thirteen, fourteen school year to standardize timing of decision-making benchmarks surrounding the budget development process and support a transparent process. A timeline for key events in the budget process will be presented this evening by our CFO, Nicole Conley Abram. She is incredibly capable and will answer all of your questions, and Bill will take any notes for me. And you're scheduled to take action on your budget development calendar at the October regular meeting.
Okay, thank you, I hope you feel better. Okay, hi, Nicole.
Hi, how are you?
Do you want to give any overview, or do you just want us to ask questions if there's, describe how it compares to prior years and?
Well, it's pretty consistent with the previous years. It, it follows sort of an August adoption schedule to give us time to sort of hear what some of the trajectory is in terms of decisions at the state legislative level. So we've built in an August timeframe, which means that in August, you would adopt sort of the, the notice that goes in the paper that where we publish the tax rate, as well as schedule the public hearing and adopt the budget. It also includes a timeline if we want to move down the path for a possible TRE in November twenty-thirteen, obviously, which you would also call for the election in that August timeframe. It includes key dates for discussion of the preliminary budget and, and tax rate, it, which is early January. We're, we'll be presenting the assumptions and the staffing formula in November. We'll also, in February, discuss, you know, whether or not the board wanted to move forward with the historic exemption program as is, as well as presenting the preliminary budget. So those are sort of the major highlights. Like I said, it's pretty consistent with previous years. Earlier years, we tried to accelerate sort of a June sort of soft adoption, but this sort of just moves down the path towards an August adoption. And at this point, I'll take any questions or modifications that you may have. The intent is so that we can post it on the website at our finance and budget page, so we can highlight those key milestones associated with the budget process.
Thanks, Nicole, and I would say it's actually pretty, pretty wise, given the school finance litigation and the legislative session, to not try to assume that we can get something done in June and jam it in there. So I think that makes a lot of sense. Questions or comments for Ms. Conley Abram with respect to the calendar? Which, again, would be looked for just adoption, but it's like anything else, it can change, there can be some modifications, it's not set in stone. We just established the guideline, and then this gets the ball rolling for the rest of the team. Thoughts, questions, comments? Ms. Snyder?
Ms. Conley Abram, just a general question. I don't have any problem with the calendar as such, and agree that it seems about as reasonable as anything else. But I am concerned about some items that are floating around as potential legislation and the impact they would have on the budget. We may not know what those are until middle of June, even first part of July or so, I don't remember. Mark, do you remember how long the governor has to not sign something for it to become law? I mean, is it thirty days?
I think it's thirty days at the end of the.
So it could be early July before we actually know where he didn't sign a bill.
It's not that long, is it?
It's like the fifteenth of June.
Okay.
Isn't that, there's a date, it's a got that date.
Yeah, I, I know it is, I just don't remember.
It's something like twenty days or something like.
Twenty days.
I've been in the session.
Thanks, Chris. But, I mean, if, if there were changes that, you know, would radically impact our, you know, our ability to fund things, whether it's taking money to go to either charters or vouchers or something along those lines, or some new mandate that we have to do K education in a certain way, and, you know, do we have enough time and resources to scramble to make up, you know, significant change in the budget in some way?
Thank you, that's a very good question. Obviously, we can, you know, as the budget process evolves at the state level, we will continue to provide you with updates in terms of possible financial impacts, and I, I do think that we are in a fairly better position to absorb any unanticipated reductions that may come our way. If you recall, we set aside twenty-five million dollars in our reserves to account for possible budgetary fallout from the state level. So I think we're sort of positioned to absorb any impact that we hadn't planned for as, through the course of our budget development. Obviously, if it goes beyond those levels, it would be challenging for us and difficult for us to make any kind of operational changes by the time June came around. But obviously, we're gonna have to make sure that we aggressively pursue our legislative strategy to ensure that we can protect ourselves and, and stay within that twenty-five million dollar coverage area.
Okay, one other question. You've got us taking authorization on the historic tax, property tax program in February. Haven't we done that in August in the past, and might it not be wise to move it to a later date just to give us a little bit more wiggle room in case something does come down where we need to reexamine the commitment for that program?
Certainly, we have done it later, we've typically done it when we've adopted the budget, but considering the fact that most recent years that we've made some pretty dramatic changes to the program, and so this was just in a hope that we would give some advanced time to both TCAD, as well as the Travis County Collector's Office to implement any sort of programmatic changes that would require them to give notice to taxpayers before sort of the second or third notice went out. So this was just an opportunity to sort of gauge, you know, where the board was in terms of making any kind of significant changes to the program. I think historically, I think we've had some fairly, fair consensus around historic and continuing the program, so waiting till August didn't necessarily pose a significant impact to the notice of those impacted taxpayers. But considering the last recent years, I thought it may be best or more prudent that we have a discussion earlier so that we can notify the taxing agencies should any major changes happen to the program. But we can certainly, action does not necessarily have to occur in that February timeframe.
Yeah, well, I mean, my, my take is, you know, first of all, the, the amount of money that we would actually save by not granting this is relatively small, but you know, the city continues to view things historically that I, I think might not pass the test of others. You know, the Westgate condo tower is an example, and, you know, what, you know, having that declared historic, if the city decides to go down that path, I mean, that, that's a large chunk of money that's being taken off the table right there. So, you know, I, I would just advocate for, you know, giving us the most amount of wiggle room that we can in terms of, you know, possibly examining that as a probably last resource type thing to, to do, which would push it back later into the budget cycle.
Okay, so just a couple of follows-up. The governor, sorry? I got eleven fifty-eight. So the governor has twenty days, so Chris, you nailed it, so it's.
Chris, you're right.
So June sixteenth?
Well, actually, it's assuming that it's legislation passed.
So it's final, this is the, that's regular session, so it's final adjournment after the regular session, and so then there's, there can be special sessions which will drive it, but the June sixteenth is the date if it's, if it's a regular session item, and then after that. But it's twenty days following final adjournment. Did, Ms. Moore, do you have a question?
I did, but it's almost midnight.
To Ms. Torres, talk fast, folks.
I'll just, just one thing, I, I tend to disagree, or I'm on the other side as far as Mr. Snyder. I think it's good to have that historic tax exemption earlier in the year so that we can at least discuss it and decide and have plenty of time to take action, one way or the other, so.
I have to agree, I just think we really need to have it as early as possible, you know, and I realize it's not a whole lot of money that we gain. But I think that the taxpayers need to know as soon as possible so they can plan. For some of those taxpayers, it's a chunk of money that they need to plan for. If we wait too late, we're stuck.
Okay, I got fits, and the key is you can talk about it, and then if you decide not to take action, you can do that, but it's, it's worth it definitely to keep it on the schedule. Other comments or questions, we've got about thirty seconds before we get to midnight. Nicole, this is very good, we'll look forward to adoption of this and then knowing that, that it's, provides a guideline, but if for some reason there's changes along the way, you'll just know. Thank you very much, thanks for staying so late, thanks, everybody, it's basically, we're adjourned, it's essentially midnight. Good night.